Testing, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks. Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the regular City Council meeting for May the 17th, 2022. Time is now 6:10. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we need to continue to handle our City Council meetings a little differently than we have in the past. I'm now going to ask our City Manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconferencing options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower-hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing *9 at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to the City Council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Can we have a report from closed session?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Council considered two, three items of labor negotiations, three different units, as described in the agenda. The Council received information and provided direction, and there's no reportable action.
All right, thank you. I will now call the meeting to order. If I could get a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papano.
Here.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If you would all join me in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute.
I would like to ask if Caitlin Gatridge, would you like to come up and lead us in the pledge? If you, if that's okay with you.
I know you weren't surprised. Go ahead.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to the citizens of this country.
Thank you.
Can we have our replay statement, please, Tina?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 21st at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item F, Agenda Approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from the Council?
Yes, I would like to move, oh, I should, sorry, I should have marked it, L4, to after presentations, to give the President of the Chamber of Commerce a better opportunity to speak.
Actually, I think he's going to speak under public comment, general public comment.
Is he?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Vanderburg. Okay, without any other changes, then we will move on to Item G, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to City Council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
First public comment is from Kevin Borges, Galt Chamber of Commerce.
Please state your name and...
My name is Kevin.
Is the button pushed? It's up by the mic, I think. Sean's going to help you.
On the bottom.
I can't really, there we go.
There we go.
There we go. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin Borges. I'm the President of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I am here tonight in regards to the ARPA Small Business Assistance Grant. We've had the opportunity to work with the city, and we do believe that the application process is pretty simple and streamlined, and we do believe that the program is very generous in comparison to other cities located in our area. And we do believe that this is something that small businesses here in Galt will be able to benefit from, but I wanted the opportunity to speak. I'm not able to stay until later in the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Ms. Hubert?
Michael Little.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, City Manager Heinz. My name is Mike Little and I'm the President of the Galt Police Officers Association. I'm here for a couple reasons. I want to start off with thanking City Manager Heinz for going above and beyond to ensure that a contingent of our officers were in Washington, D.C. for the last week honoring Officer Graywall and Officer Ton, as Officer Graywall was memorialized on the National Peace Officer Memorial. And with that, there was a couple events, candlelight vigil on the Capitol Mall, and then a formal ceremony at the West Steps of the Capitol that the President attended. Mr. Heinz, you going above and beyond with the city policy and looking out for our people means the world to us, and so I just want to thank you for allowing the opportunity to send the group over and allow some more closure for our people. Main topic while I'm here is support for the association. We have 29 men and women that come to work every single day to protect this city, and they are grossly underpaid. They deserve to be represented financially in a adequate way. They are double digits behind the median average of local agencies. And I say double digits, I'm talking 20s to 30s, not 10s, and that's quite unacceptable. I do want to go on record for the public to understand that the City Council has supported the police department through and through, and our appreciation for that is, there is no real words for that. You guys have always supported us. We've been through some good times, been through some absolute horrific times, and you guys have stood with us that entire time. The five of you have a tough job. However, if what has passed has happened in the cities, the tough job is too tough, they just kind of kick it down the road. You guys have taken pretty hard topics head-on. Now we've got to take one of the biggest topics head-on, and that's to get our officers to be competitive pay, because otherwise, we're going to be paying for below-average candidates for officers, and that the city cannot afford. And looking over the agenda in past meetings, we're talking in depth about the appearance of the city, not about murders and rapes and robberies and carjackings. Yeah, that stuff does occur at a very, very rare rate compared to our local regional cities, and that's because of the officers and the quality of officers that we have. We are going to lose that quality of officer if we don't step up to the plate as a group to make that happen. You know, there's, there's a city to our south that is, I want to say, probably five times, if not bigger than us, that is going through some pretty nasty negotiations, and they're having shifts show up at the same amount of officers that we're showing up in. And I don't think that we're going to get there, but that's the absolute, you know, I don't want to get to a point to staffing where we're really back to minimal or below minimum, because our officers are leaving to put food on the table for their families. I do have the faith in this council that as a group, we can work together and make that happen. I just want to make sure that you guys understand the severity, and the public understands the severity, that when we have people that are 20% to 30% underpaid in a market, for real estate terms, it's a buyer's market, there's, no one wants to be a cop right now, so if you are a cop already, you can go to any department in the state without them blinking. And we have an amazing group of men and women that work for the city, and I want to keep them here, retain them, so when you go over measure R later, that part of that is retention, to retain the group we have while adding just as quality, if not better quality, officers to the city, to ensure the safety to the city and to the citizens. Again, I appreciate you guys' support, and I know that there's a lot of tough issues going on, and truthfully, I do believe that if we can conquer this...
made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. Can we have a report from closed session?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Council considered two, three items of labor negotiations, three different units, as described in the agenda. Council received information and provided direction, and there's no reportable action.
All right. Thank you. I will now call the meeting to order. If I could get a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papinow.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If you would all join me in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute. I would like to ask if Caitlin Gutridge, would you like to come up and lead us in the pledge? If you, if that's okay with you.
Oh, okay.
I know you weren't surprised. Go ahead.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other.
Thank you. Can we have our replay statement, please, Tina?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 21st at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from the council?
Yes. I would like to move, oh, I should, I should, sorry, I should have marked it, L4, to after presentations to give the President of the Chamber of Commerce a better opportunity to speak.
Actually, I think he's going to speak under public comment, general public comment.
Is he?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vandenberg. Okay. Without any other changes, then we will move on to item G, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to City Council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
First public comment is from Kevin Borges, Galt Chamber of Commerce.
Please state your name and...
My name is Kevin.
Is the button pushed? There's, it's up by the mic, I think. Sean's gonna help you.
On the bottom.
I can't really, there we go.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin Borges. I'm the President of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I am here tonight in regards to the ARPA Small Business Assistance Grant. We've had the opportunity to work with the city, and we do believe that the application process is pretty simple and streamlined, and we do believe that the program is very generous in comparison to other cities located in our area. And we do believe that this is something that small businesses here in Galt will be able to benefit from, but I wanted the opportunity to speak. I'm not able to stay until later in the meeting. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Ms. Hubert?
Michael Little.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager Heinz. My name is Mike Little and the President of the Galt Police Officer Association. I'm here for a couple of reasons. I want to start off with thanking City Manager Heinz for going above and beyond to ensure that a contingent of our officers were in Washington, D.C. for the last week honoring Officer Graywall and Officer Ton, as Officer Graywall was memorialized on the National Peace Officer Memorial. And with that, there was a couple of events, candlelight vigil on the Capitol Mall, and then a formal ceremony at the west steps of the Capitol that the President attended. Mr. Heinz, you going above and beyond with the city policy and looking out for our people means the world to us, and so I just want to thank you for allowing the opportunity to send the group over and allow some more closure for our people. Main topic while I'm here is support for the association. We have 29 men and women that come to work every single day to protect this city, and they are grossly underpaid. They deserve to be represented financially in a adequate way. They are double digits behind the median average of local agencies. And I say double digits, I'm talking 20s to 30s, not 10s, and that's quite unacceptable. I do want to go on record for the public to understand that the City Council has supported the Police Department through and through, and our appreciation for that is, there is no real words for that. You guys have always supported us. We've been through some good times, been through some absolute horrific times, and you guys have stood with us that entire time. The five of you have a tough job. However, if what has the past has happened in the cities, the tough job is too tough, they just kind of kick it down the road. You guys have taken pretty hard topics head-on. Now we got to take one of the biggest topics head-on, and that's to get our officers to be competitive pay, because otherwise, we're going to be paying for below-average candidates for officers, and that the city cannot afford. And looking over the agenda in past meetings, we're talking in depth about the appearance of the city, not about murders and rapes and robberies and carjackings. Yeah, that stuff does occur at a very, very rare rate compared to our local regional cities, and that's because of the officers and the quality of officers that we have. We are going to lose that quality of officer if we don't step up to the plate as a group to make that happen. You know, there's, there's a city to our south that is, I want to say, probably five times, if not bigger than us, that is going through some pretty nasty negotiations, and they're having shifts show up at the same amount of officers that we're showing up in. And I don't think that we're going to get there, but that's the absolute, you know, I don't want to get to a point to staffing where we're really back to minimal or below minimum, because our officers are leaving to put food on the table for their families. I do have the faith in this council that as a group, we can work together and make that happen. I just want to make sure that you guys understand the severity, and the public understands the severity, that when we have people that are 20% to 30% underpaid in a market, for real estate terms, it's a buyer's market, there's, no one wants to be a cop right now, so if you are a cop already, you can go to any department in the state without them blinking. And we have an amazing group of men and women that work for the city, and I want to keep them here, retain them. So when you go over measure R later, that, part of that is retention, to retain the group we have while adding just as quality, if not better quality, officers to the city to ensure the safety to the city and to the citizens. Again, I appreciate you guys' support, and I know that there's a lot of tough issues going on. And truthfully, I do believe that if we can conquer this moving forward, the city as a whole is going to move a lot better as well, just because I know that our officers and the members of this association are going to go above and beyond tenfold what they already are for the city, and I truly do believe that they do, do amazing work, and it's only going to add to that, to that work to ensure that our citizens and businesses and parks and you name it are the best in the region. And I think it does start with the public safety aspect of that. So as we get forward, I appreciate you guys taking the time and having questions. If you did anything, questions do pop up, please feel free to reach out. And again, you guys have been nothing but great for us, and I want to continue that relationship moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Officer Little. All right. Do we have any additional public comment?
Kathy Grimes.
Yes, Kathy Grimes. Good evening, Mayor and the council members. I'd like to thank you for letting me speak tonight. After this last, last comments made, I feel like it's kind of a not-so-important item, but to us, it is. I'm coming to you to request information and work done on the Monterey Dog Park. I have a small dog that is a mini labradoodle, and her name is Sophie, and we call her Cujo for short, because she is a wild dog and loves to run and loves the dog park. I have to tell you that the dog park is so overgrown and only gets the lawn cut and the trash picked up once a month. The clover and the grass is almost a foot high. Two dogs have been stung in the last four days. None of them needed to go to the vet. My previous dog did. It was quite expensive. She was on IVs. I, I don't know why this is not being done. I know that out of 21 parks, I believe it is, in Galt, we have one dog park. That's a park where people take their animals to run and to play, and it's where we, as a community, get together. There are 20 to 30 of us that go every day, and the last week, we haven't been able to go. And I called and I complained, and a lady called me back, and she said the lawn would be mowed tomorrow, Wednesday. So I'm hoping that gets done, but I would like some help with your parks and recreations, something for this little dog park. We have a lot of people that depend on it and need it, and while I appreciate people are having a hard time just making ends meet, and I understand that, it seems like a lesser thing, but to us, it's really, really important. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you can come to some terms with that that'll help us. And I have pictures, if anybody wants to see them. One of the dog park trash bin, this trash bin, where the hole is at the bottom, is where the plastic bag draws in. These bags are stuffed up to the top, as far as they can go, and they're falling out, and that's of dog waste. And it's just a hard thing to deal with. I think we can do better. I'm hoping we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimes.
In response... Mr. Mayor, may I, you're going to address that, if you're not going to, I'd like to.
I was going to say something real quick.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I just want to let you know and other citizens, don't ever feel that any item is too small to bring forward. I mean, I know we talk about a lot of big things here, and to follow up behind Officer Little in that discussion, I know would be difficult, but these are important things, and we appreciate you coming and saying those. As you were, I reached out to our Parks Director, Mr. Solis, and apparently you were contacted and let know that this is scheduled to be mowed tomorrow. And as you may know, we are discussing Parks and Rec tonight with budget, and so for those of you in the audience listening to her comments tonight, know that this is important to us, and we're trying to figure out how to solve that and get back to a service level that everybody wants. So, Mr. Vandenberg, do you want to say anything?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Any further public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Anybody on the phone?
No.
Okay. Again, if you would like to speak a public comment, there's speaker sheets backside of the room. Fill them out, bring them forward. You can also speak on each agenda item, should you want to do so, by doing the same time, the same thing at any time during the meeting. All right. Moving on past public comment, we are going to go next to our presentations. First presentation this night is going to be for certificate of recognition, sorry, for two local Galt residents who are here tonight, Brody and Caitlin Gutridge. We have some proclamations, or not proclamations, but some certificates of recognition for these two. You like, would you like to come up, the two of you? Your parents can come up, too, if you like. So Brody and Caitlin are brother and sister, as you would imagine by their names, and they are being recognized by the council tonight and myself for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And so I had to do a little research. I know what Eagle Scout is, but I wanted to, you know, put in a little context for the public. So from what I read, basically, in the scouting program, less than 5%, I saw some varying numbers, but roughly 5%, only 5% of scouts actually achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. It's very difficult to get to. It takes a lot of work, a lot of community service, I'm sure, and all kinds of things. And so obviously, you have to demonstrate a high level of commitment to get to that point. So before I present these to you, would you like to eat, say anything?
So, just so the public knows, I did my Eagle project based off of LaF Cat organization, where I helped make feeding boxes for feral cats for LaF Cats organization, and it helps the cats around the community.
Interesting.
And for my Eagle project, I did a rock garden at River Oaks Elementary in Galt. We made a bench and two planter boxes with some extra benches for parents to sit at when they're waiting to pick up their kid. Each student got to paint a rock that went into this special garden, and we laid it all out for them and flattened out the area, made it look all nice for them.
All right. Well, I just want to read one of these. They're both the same, but I'll just, what this is, is the City of Council of, the City Council of City of Galt, California, presented this day, excuse me, 17th of May, 2022, congratulating you in earning the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. We, as the council, hope you take tremendous pride in the hard work and commitment to service that brought you to this moment. This achievement speaks to your role as a young leader in our community. We encourage you to continue to take on new projects, setting a positive example and striving to make a difference. Young people like you give us hope for the future, and we wish you all the best. And signed, all of us, including myself. So if you want to come up and get these, and I don't know if your mom wants to take a picture or something, why don't you just go ahead and, you guys can each hold these and stand in front of the dais here, and your mom can take a picture. That one's yours, and that one's yours. Congratulations. Our second presentation this evening is going to be not as spectacular, but hopefully just as interesting, from our Sales Tax Forecast Methodology presented by our consultant, HDL. Mr. Heinz?
Mr. Mayor, if you would give us a couple of minutes, we're waiting for the presenters to call into the Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, while we're waiting, I was just told by Bonnie, the editor of the Galt Herald, owner of the Galt Herald, that the young lady who received her Eagle Scout designation is the first female who've reached that designation in the, was it the region?
This region.
This region.
Oh. I wish you would have mentioned that. Well, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes. Thanks.
Future, future council member right there. Future mayor. Future governor, maybe. I don't know.
All right. Mr. Mayor, we're going to move on, and we'll do that presentation on June 2nd at the special budget meeting.
Okay. All right. For those of you watching, we're going to pass over item H2, and we're going to move on to item I, which is reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend a Sacramento Transportation Authority Board meeting on May 12, and there are a few things I would like to discuss in this meeting. We approved a resolution extending Assembly Bill 361, and the second thing introduced draft STA budget fiscal year 2022 and 2023, and it's continued till June 1st, then I will report the whole thing back to the next meeting. The other thing, we have a, we have a vacancy Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee in the Sacramento Transportation Authority. They're searching a candidate. If anybody know any good candidate, please direct to the STA or let me know, then I will give you the direction how to apply. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Papinow?
On May 9th, along with the mayor, well, I attended the first hour and a little bit of the cast meeting, and it seemed like a little bit of a resurrection of the old cast meeting, City and Schools Together. And the City Manager provided some pretty good information and collaboration with the school district as far as development and expectations for, for student growth and so forth, so that is going to be a good topic moving forward, and I'll let the mayor talk about the second half of the meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. I myself, also, as Councilman Papinow mentioned, attended the cast meeting, and for those who didn't hear it, cast stands for Cities and Schools Together. So the intent of this meeting is that we meet with, there's two council members, Mr. Papinow, myself, assigned. There's two elementary school board members, two high school board members, and then both of the superintendents from the elementary and the, the high school district. And we meet, and the City Manager attended as well, as well as our economic, or our Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman. And basically, the intent of the meeting is to get together and see, you know, how the work, how the school and the, and the city can collaborate together on any important issues. I believe the purpose of the meeting unfortunately was kind of sidelined during COVID. We didn't really meet much, but now that the meetings are getting back to order, hopefully talk about some good things. Just a couple of things from that meeting, I think, were of note, is we were, Mr. Hoffman showed some, some graphs of growth in Galt, you know, over the various years. The amount of housing permits have been pulled in decline and, and in better years. And the one thing that's really, a lot of people are probably not aware of, is that our schools are actually in declining enrollment in Galt, and schools are funded by the amount of students they have. So for example, at the elementary level, they have basically about 350 students that are exiting eighth grade, but they only have about 150 students that are registered for kindergarten, or, yeah. So basically, you have a net loss of about 200 students. Now, they do expect maybe there to be a few more registrations before start of the year, but there's going to be a net loss, and the same is the same, it is the same for the high school district. And so funny enough is, we all look at Galt, you know, everybody thinks we're growing so fast and all that, but we actually are declining enrollment in our schools, and so, you know, those are concerning numbers, and we were trying to talk about the growth of the city from Craig and that, and so it was, it was a lot of good information. So if you would like any further information about that, you can reach out to your school district office, superintendent's office, and they have that data they can provide with you guys. And that's all I have on, on that. So without further, we will move on to item J, our information, our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 8 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from the consent calendar from council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to, I, I just want to make a comment on item 6. I did call Mr. Hoffman today for his explaining on this one. I was satisfied, so I'm now going to pull that item. Thank you.
Okay. I actually, I just wanted to pull item J7, just for a quick question, so I'm going to pull J7. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following eight, seven items. The first item is going to be the minutes of the regular meeting of May 3rd. Item 2, receiving file warrants for a period ending May 5th, 2022. Item 3 is going to be AB 361 Resolution, making findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings by teleconference. Item 4, the rejection of bids for the wastewater treatment plant road improvement project, CIP 53AB. Item 5, the rejection of bids for the 2022 Gora Aquatic Center pool heater replacement project. Item 6, the Rainy Planning and Management Contract for Environmental Planning Services and Preparation of Environmental Review of Housing Element Site 18. And item 8, the approval of the new job classification for the litter abatement worker, salary range, and budget appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve those seven items?
Approved.
Second. Moved by Council, moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, and seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent approved 4-0. On item J7, I just, Mr. Heinz, I just wanted to, and I apologize, I did, I could have just talked to you about this, but today was really busy for me, but I know this is about removing the, that little technicality on the approval for the mayor versus the City Manager on the skip financing thing, but I, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure we bring this back as soon as possible, because I think this needs to have a lot of discussion. I, I'm not really a big fan of this program at all, and I, I would like the council to have a chance to discuss it further and see where...
Understood.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So with that, is there any, actually, is there any public comment on this item, since I pulled it, I guess, or any of the consent items, actually, for that matter, right?
No public comment.
Okay. Does council have any comment on the item before I call for a motion? No? Okay. All right. Looking for a motion to approve the Statewide Community Infrastructure Program, or SCIP, Technical Cleanup of the Acquisition Agreement Signature from Mayor to City Manager.
So move?
Move. Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved 4 to 0. Moving on to item K, Scheduled Matters, Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item L, our regular calendar. First item is going to be from our Treasurer's Office. The subject is going to be the Galt, City of Galt Investment Policy for Fiscal Years 2022 to '23 by our City Treasurer, Sean Farrell. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you very much. There you go. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, thank you very much for, for having me tonight. Last year, after you approved the investment policy, I submitted that policy to the certify, or the California Municipal Treasurer Association. They have a, an investment policy certification program, and, and I will say that, that our policy did... policy certification program. And I will say that our policy did pass a certain, you know, to make sure that we had all the right government codes in our investment policy and all the right items were addressed. So with that, I'll show this up to the camera right there, and that's the certificate that we receive as far as now we have a certified California Municipal Treasurers Association investment policy. Okay? With that, I will say that tonight you have before you the investment policy for the next fiscal year, '22, '23. And the differences that between last year and this year is really only one that I made. But let me ask, before I get to that, let me just say that the investment policy is kind of like a roadmap as far as how we make investments. And ultimately, you as the city council members have the authority to make those investments. One part of this investment policy tonight is you giving the authority to, for actual investments, to the city treasurer. So that's one very important element to this. So now I'll talk about the differences between last year and this year. On page 8 of the investment policy under performance standards, last year, we had a performance standard that the yield that we as a city received would be measured against the two-year treasury note. Well, which when rates were not moving, that was fine, okay? But now that the rates are in fact moving up, I changed it to the 24-month moving average of the yield of the two-year treasury note. So if you take the 24-month average, then that will be our new, what is called benchmark. The other change that I made, which was, I, last year, I had three different brokers that I dealt with. One retired. So on the last page of your policy, I removed a gentleman named Robert Allen, and the other two brokers that I deal with have remained. So with that, I'll answer any questions regarding the investment policy. Otherwise, I ask for your approval this evening for the policy for fiscal year '22, '23.
Mr. Farrell, was there any major differences? I mean, I read through this, but not having the old one in front of me to compare, is there any differences? Any, have any different strategies that you've changed, or is it relatively the same?
No, it is relatively the same. The, on, the same, if you notice, starting on page 4, I did not make any changes as far as the authorized and suitable instruments. Those instruments are all approved per California Government Code. And even then, we're a little bit even more conservative than, say, larger, larger cities when it comes to investing. And most of the investments right now, besides the local agency investment fund and our local Farmers Emergence Bank, is sometimes I'll buy CDs if it makes sense. Other times I'll, and what I'm doing right now is in putting quite a bit of money into the, buying bonds, just federal home loan bank bonds. And, you know, right now, I'm not going over a two-year investment as far as bonds, because I know rates are going up. And so I'm trying to keep it, keep the duration low or small.
So no investments in Bitcoin or anything, then?
I'm going to remind you of our investment objectives, safety first, liquidity, and then yield.
Yes. I was joking for the public. Do we have any questions for Mr. Farrell from the council?
All right. Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
No public comment.
Sir, Mr. Brosman, if you would like to speak, just grab a speaker sheet, come up and you can come to the podium, sir. Sorry. Mr. Brosman first, ma'am, and then I'll let you go after. For those of you that want to speak, we need to follow protocol and fill out a speaker sheet and then bring it up. I understand your handicap, ma'am. If somebody wants to help her grab a sheet.
Thank you, brother.
You're welcome.
Yeah, again, the speaker cards need to be filled out for each item. So one card doesn't give you like authority to speak on every item throughout the night, so you would need to turn one each for each item, unfortunately. So as soon as Ms. Johnson is done with hers and Mr. Brosman fills out hers, you can just make it brief. Mr. Brosman doesn't need to be there. Hold on, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Brosman needs to go first. Sorry. Chris, if you could grab hers too, and just pass, hand them to Mr. Farrell here, and we can pass them around. Go ahead, Mr. Brosman. You got five minutes. We'll get her farm next.
I have to real short question. To me, I picked up on that we're going from three brokers to two brokers. To me, as a conservative, I like having three brokers involved in the process instead of two, because now we have three separate investment strategies instead of two separate investment strategies. So I don't know if you're pursuing replacing that retired, which would be what I would prefer, but that was just my peanut gallery comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Mr. Farrell, do you want to comment on that, or?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to. So we had, we had three, because I added one actually last year. I added the last one, Debbie Higgins. Originally, we had two. The last year, I got a hint that the second one was going to retire, and that's why I added the Higgins Capital Management. So, and in fact, right, a month after the approval of the investment policy, Mr. Allen did retire. So we're back, we're back to two. Now, as far as having, you know, having two or having three, what I normally do is I buy new issue federal home loan bank bonds, and it's the same price no matter which broker I go with. And also, the, any CDs that I buy are nationwide CDs, and any broker is going to be able to get the same price, because those are pretty much set in their interest rate. So honestly, two is fine. We still have a competitive, I guess, advantage as far as, as far as I switch off between the brokers when I purchase. So in case one decides all of a sudden to retire, we still have another one. And at that point, I would add a second. So that's the reason why.
Just to clarify, maybe just to clarify, Mr. Bros, maybe me misunderstood, or maybe I'm, just to clarify, so these brokers are just where you make your purchases through? These aren't financial advisors that are taking your money and investing it on their discretion? You're the one making those decisions? They're just, they're just the conduit or the mechanism to making those purchases, right?
Yeah, exactly. They're just the conduit to make those purchases. I'm the one that, your treasurer is the one who actually decides, you know, where to invest, how to invest it, and what makes the most sense for the City of Galt.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Ms. Johnson, you want to hand your card to Mr. Farrell here, and you can come up to the microphone and speak?
I have a similar question.
Okay. Just come up to the microphone, and you can go ahead and state your name and ask your question.
Phyllis Johnson, 115 Second Street, proudly here in Galt. I'm going to qualify it very shortly. I was in banking for 16 years plus in New York. I dealt with stocks and bonds on a daily basis. My question to the gentleman is, and he kind of answered it, who are these current three brokers? And I understand their position, but what companies do they represent? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. You can have a seat. Mr. Farrell?
Yeah. So the first broker is a gentleman, a guy named Doug Robinson. He owns Robinson Capital Management. I've been working with him and purchasing securities through him with, for, over the last 25 years here in this position. And Debbie Higgins, I have known, and she represents Higgins Capital Management. And, gosh, I've known her for well over 20 years. And I've just started actually working and purchasing items through her. So these are just brokers. And there's a gazillion of them, you know, being that you're familiar with, and you've been in banking for a number of years. And I, of course, have been in banking for over 30 years myself. So these are just brokers that I can buy any type of instrument that I choose to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, for answering that question.
Sure.
Sure. Any further public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. Then we need, it looks like we need a motion, Frank, to accept the?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Looking for a motion to accept the investment policy as submitted by Mr. Farrell.
Moved?
Moved by Councilmember Papinow, and I will second that. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Motion's approved 4-0. Item 2, also with Mr. Farrell, is the treasurer's report for a period ending March 2022.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Let me first give you kind of a very quick economic report, because I'm sure everyone's interested in that. Okay? We all have heard that the inflation rate for the month of April was 8.3%. It's very, very high. The, according to the EDD website, the unemployment rate in the City of Galt is at 6.5%. And that's ending March. I actually, I have a, I, I'm not sure if that number is completely accurate, because normally it follows real close to the county of Sacramento. And according to that EDD website, it said the county of Sacramento is at an unemployment rate of 4%. So there's a discrepancy there. And I'm just not sure EDD has updated the City of Galt's information. That's, I have nothing to prove it, but I just don't think that that's realistic. I will also tell you that during the month of March, there were 51 homes that were sold in Galt. The median price was $510,000, which was about 14.9% increase from a year ago. Galt is actually still a bargain as far as that is concerned. There's only two other cities that are less than what in Galt, and that is Rio Linda and North Highlands. The county on the whole, the median price was $545,000. So with that, I will, I will say that we all know that the Federal Reserve has increased their rates, and I think they'll continue to increase their rates to try to tamp down inflation. Now, what that means for the City of Galt is that as the Federal Reserve raises rates, it also means that the city can earn more interest, and we're certainly trying to take advantage of that as much as possible. Going back to my previous comments, I'm doing what I can as far as buying these different federal home loan bank bonds, and I'm trying to stay at a duration of two years or less, usually with what is called a callable feature, and usually with a step-up feature. So which means that, for instance, I have a bond that is settling Tuesday, next Tuesday, which is a two-year. It's callable every six months, and that means the federal home loan bank can actually pull it back after six months. And then if they do not decide not to pull it back, then what happens is the interest rate will then increase by 1% for every six months until I hit that two-year maturity. So those are the types of instruments that I'm looking at. So with that, a lot of things have happened between end of March, which is my report, and today. For instance, we had $6 million in Farmers Emergence in a money market account, earning 30 basis points or 0.30. Since then, the life rate has gone beyond the 30 basis points. So what I did is I removed $5 million of that and put it in life, so that way we could earn a little bit more interest other than keeping it in that money market account. Just last week, last Thursday, May the 12th, a CD of two, of two-year CD did mature at Farmers Emergence Bank of $2.5 million. And it's, the banks are not willing to pay much these days on CDs. And so I took that $2.5 million out again, and I will go ahead and purchase a bond with it where I can get a higher yield. So with that, I'll answer any questions. Otherwise, I ask that you approve the treasury report submitted March of 2022.
Okay. Appreciate that. Just real quick, so I know the public can't see this, but so the $6 million, so basically, just for the public that are watching, about 41% of our investments are in government agencies, and roughly now after the move that you just made, about 40% are also in the state of California life funds.
That's correct. And right now, I'm trying to move, move those life funds out to purchase more bonds. But I don't want to just do it all at once. It's got to be kind of in a laddered way.
Okay. And the total you're dealing with that you invest for the city right now looks like is $87,870,000?
Yeah, as of the end of March, that is correct.
All right. Does any questions have, any questions for Mr.?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I just have one question. How does our present economy and the inflation help us? Because it appears that you're able to invest in higher yield units. How is that, and how is that a tangible amount? I mean, we're gaining hundreds of thousands of dollars more than the previous years, or is it just?
Not when you weigh in inflation. I mean, inflation sucks. When you have inflation, which means, as I said, ending April, it was at 8.3%. That means for every dollar you have, it's 8.3% less than its purchasing power from a year ago. So yes, the Federal Reserve is raising the rates, and yeah, we can, we can invest at a higher rate, but still, it's not, it's not catching up with inflation. That's the whole reason why the Federal Reserve is raising those rates, is trying to tamp down inflation.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay.
But year to year, the actual money we're earning, you're an investment guy, so you're looking at both sides right away, which is nice. But year to year, how much better is, how much is that actually helping Galt? Does that make sense?
Okay. So at the end of this fiscal year, which will be the end of June, I'm estimating that the City of Galt, and remember, the majority of that fiscal year has been very low interest rates. I'm going to, I'm guessing that we're going to come in somewhere around $310,000 as far as interest earned. Okay?
Okay.
Now, the next fiscal year, so that would be '22, '23, I'm honestly, we're at least going, I think, going to double it. So, okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Farrell? All right. Then do we need a motion to accept that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Public comment, too.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment on the treasurer's report?
No public comment.
Okay. All right. Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
So moved?
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved 4 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Always interesting.
One more time.
All right. Moving on to our next item from the city's manager's office. This is item L3. The subject is going to be the proposed fiscal year 2022 to '23 and '23 to '24 budget for Parks and Recreation, Lighting and Landscape Districts, Measure R, and other funds. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A good hello to everyone out there in the, in the seats, and welcome to our budget presentation. We're going to start with a PowerPoint. We're going to start with a PowerPoint that goes over all of the funds. We're going to, well, we're actually going to cover all the funds. And, but we're going to zero in on parks, first of all, and then we'll talk about some of the other funds. And then we're going to recycle back to a more specific area in parks, and that's parks maintenance. So that'll be the second presentation. But for this presentation, we'll just kind of go through all the other funds generally, and we'll come back to parks and the LLDs and some of the other things that we're going to be talking about tonight. So let's go to the next slide. By the way, joining me tonight will be Matt Boring and Armando Solis and members of our team, Chief Kalanowski, to talk about these other funds as well. So the first slide is basically a bird's eye view, 30,000-foot level, of all of the funds that the city has. And I believe we have about 27 funds. And you can see the general fund is up top. And what we've done is we've laid the expenditures and revenues for each of the fiscal years right next to each other, so the reader can see how we're budgeting. In those areas where we're doing some deficit budgeting, we'll we'll explain all that, but generally, we try to keep our expenditures within the revenues that we're projecting. And before I move on from this slide, remember, my presentations are conversations and presentations, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask them at any time. Okay. So let's go with the next slide, and we got this question, I believe, at the last meeting, or it came up in conversation after the meeting. And so the question was, hey, we've got a lot of projects sitting out there, a lot of residential projects sitting out there right now. What would they be worth to our property tax revenue if all of those projects hypothetically were built out and all those houses were sold? And so we did, and this is a very rough estimate, that we basically came up with that if all those properties were sold, we would see another $100,000 to $127,000 in property tax revenues. And so that's, we just wanted to see what that amount would look like. There would be an offset, because we're actually collecting some property tax revenues on those properties already, but they're not improved properties. It's just land. So the property taxes are a lot lower. But I wanted to just have that out there, make sure the council could see it, because I knew that that was a question. Earlier, earlier in the agenda, we also wanted to bring in HDL, who is our consultants for our sales tax estimates and our property tax estimates. Due to some technical difficulties, we weren't able to get HDL on the line for sales tax methodology. We'll have both of those presentations at the June 2nd meeting, a special council meeting, so tune in for that. Let's go to the next slide. And so we're gonna dive into our first department. Matt Boring will be sort of driving, he'll be your tour guide through this presentation, and the department directors will be providing sort of the color commentary as we move through. So the first up is Parks and Recreation, and I'll turn it over to Director Solis and his team.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So as you can see, our department, we have five divisions. We have our Galt Market, Special Events, we have our Recreation, our Administration, and our Parks. I think you've heard about our Parks Division a couple of times. But, so within that... So within that, some major things that are, that are happening this year in our Recreation side, I've informed you that our after-school program would be discontinued as the elementary school district received a grant. So we will no longer have after-school program during school year, but we will continue that program over the summer. Our City Tots program, before COVID, our numbers were very low. There are competing programs that are at Fair Side School for free to low income. So we've discontinued that program. We currently are, other things that we're talking about tonight is we're mowing our parks bi-weekly and our landscaping once a month, so that'll be a topic that we talk about later. And our Galt Market has held steady over this COVID two years, so we're really happy with that part of it. And then if you have any specific questions about our budget, I'd be happy to answer that.
And so, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to piggyback. So the Parks and Recreation General Fund budget baseline changes for FY '23 has increased by $225,000, and the changes are noted here. Again, we've got a new request for two part-time maintenance workers, an extended cab truck, a mower replacement, and we've got two market carts, one parks admin building roof, and a little tin door hardware. And for FY '24, we have a number of additions as well, the largest of which is the Walker Park turf replacement. And so for FY '23, the baseline has gone up $225,000. For FY '24, the baseline has gone up $800,000, and most of that is driven by the Walker Park turf replacement. Those, and the baseline changes are laid out in the slide before you, and I believe I, I got them all.
City, and it should be noted that the Walker, the turf replacement is from a grant, so it's not
Yes.
standard budget item.
And we were fortunate enough that Assemblyman Jim Cooper was able to get that for us, so we're, we're very grateful to him.
Mr. Heinz, also, I just want to note to the public that one of the big jumps from the, going the two, from the 225 to the 800 is because of the $522,000, which is the increased general fund contribution. So that's the offset that the general fund picks up for the Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Which, which we, which again, those of you probably were not here in the meeting before, we didn't, that didn't occur this last time because we had a bunch of expenditure savings through COVID, and, and we actually, the market did better in '21 than '20, I think it was roughly. So anyways, we, we absorbed that, the slot that went through that period, but now that's coming back.
Yes.
Yes. That's all I had. Thanks.
All righty. And so the next slide is the landscaping, lighting and landscape districts. Matt, you wanna? I don't want to steal your thunder.
Good evening. I'll go over the lighting and landscape districts pretty briefly. They're, they're pretty simple. Starting with the Northeast Lighting and Landscape District, the '23 recommended revenue is $822,000, or no, I'm sorry, $822,000, and the expenditures are also $822,000. That includes a $350,000 transfer in from the general fund to balance the operational deficit. And you'll see new requests in there. There's the tree maintenance, and that's split between the lighting and landscape districts. And there's also several other increases that were covered in the, the Parks and Recreation due to the way we split them in the, the budget. So you'll see a portion of the extended cab truck and mower replacement. And then for the West Side Lighting and Landscape District, the '23 budget, or recommended budget, is $283,000, and that includes a $109,000 transfer in from the general fund to cover the operational deficit. And it has a percentage of those same new requests. And Lighting and Landscape District Number Three, the fiscal year '23 recommended budget is $205,000, including a $75,000 transfer in from the general fund, and that also has the same new requests.
Very good, sir. I wanted the readers to just note, and the council members to just note, the general fund support of these lighting and landscape districts. And for the folks at home who may not have all this information, the lighting and landscapes districts, both Northeast LLD and the West Side LLD was, were set up in 1990. And those LLDs were set up to provide and support maintenance for those particular geographic areas within the city. There were no escalators in the rates for those particular LLDs. And so the folks who are in those LLDs are essentially paying the same rates as they were paying in 1990. And the CPI has gone up tremendously since 1990. So we're having to backfill these deficits with general fund dollars. The landscaping and lighting district number three also is responsible for certain geographic areas. There was an escalator built into this landscaping and lighting district, however, it is inadequate to support the current service levels. So we're in a situation where the general fund is having to support all three of these LLDs. We'll go to the next slide. And the baseline changes that Matt, or sorry, Director Boring has just laid out for you are also laid out there as well, where we've got the part-time maintenance workers. Again, the, some of the expenditures that you saw in the parks budget are borne by the parks fund, but they're also borne by the lighting and landscape districts based on certain percentages. And so the truck replacement, the mower replacement, the increased general fund contribution, again, they're all shared by, between the parks fund and the LLDs.
So I have a... Go ahead, Kevin. General fund dollars come from taxpayers equally across the city, correct?
Correct.
And these new resources, the truck, the mower, those are used equally across the city regardless of if you're in an LLD or not, or which one, and how much you're contributing to those resources. Would that be a correct assessment?
Yes, we, we agree with that, that it is used across the board in our '06 through our three LNLs.
Okay.
Different percentages, but used across the board.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I have a question about the lighting and landscape districts. I was asked by somebody today, and I thought the question made a lot of sense, so I thought I'd bring it up. So with these three lighting and landscape districts, we have what the actual districts actually collect through taxes, which again, as Mr. Heinz stated, do not, have not escalated since, since the passage of Prop 218. So those are fixed costs, so they don't have an escalator in there. But what has increased, obviously, is the cost of that service, which is reflected in the numbers. So in 2021, for example, we had, the general fund had to pick up $148,000 last year, 230, and then projected for fiscal, fiscal year '23 is 350 grand. I'm just looking at the Northeast one for an example. So that 350 grand, so my question is, which I just wanted to get some clarification from either Mr. Heinz or from Mr. Solis, is obviously those, those numbers are going up. The contribution that we're having to cover that deficit are going up because the cost that we're collected from the taxpayer is fixed, but yet the cost of the service is going up, and that's why that number increases. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the question that was proposed to me was, and I gave an analogy to someone. I said, well, I said if you hired, you know, a lawn mowing, if you had a lawn mowing guy that did your yard, you know, in 1990 at $50 a month, and then now you still mow your grass, and you're still paying him $50 a month, what, what kind of quality of, what kind of level of service do you think you'd be getting it, you know, today if that cost had never went up? And the question that was asked to me was, but yeah, but technically, the cost of service has gone up, and the general fund is chipping in what is an amount that should be to make that money that's being taken from the LNL. So why are we not getting, so for me to say to a citizen, we're not getting, they're not getting what they're paying for, technically, yeah, they're not getting what they're paying for, but if we're chipping in that extra money to bring it up to that, shouldn't we, shouldn't we be providing them that level? Does that make any sense? No, I mean, I don't, maybe in my mouth, maybe I'm not thinking about it right, but...
I can answer it if you want.
Yeah, please.
They are, the general fund is bringing it up to the service level that was voted on, and that, that vote was for twice a month. Now, if you wanted to go once a week, it, that amount that would be contributed would be even more.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And that makes total sense, and that's, and, and right. So what he's referring to is that in 2018, there were some budget cuts. We, we actually had to make some tough decisions, and, and lawn mowing maintenance was backed, taken back to it from its level. And so, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. That's all the question I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And so next up, and we'll talk a little bit more about the LLDs maybe a little later, but, Mr. Mayor, that was a great analogy, and I, I just wanted to just say that these LLDs exist in sort of an enterprise fund world. And so I, I don't know what the expectation was when they were set up, but they look like they were set up to support the services that are required in those areas. And clearly, because the general fund has had to provide that extra support, you know, they're not generating as much as they, they were intended to generate. So that's one of those issues, structural issues that we are dealing with, with the budget. And next up, our illustrious police chief, Brian Kalanowski, and we'll talk about the PD's budget. Sir?
Mr. Heinz, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So as the introduction slide says, and like you heard with the general fund, we run three divisions in the police department. That's Police Administrations, Field Operations, also known as Patrol. And then our second bureau or division is Detective Support Services, which includes dispatch records and CSL. Next slide, please. Or am I supposed to do that?
No, we've, we've got
Okay.
special help over here.
All right. She's amazing. So CFD 2005-1, as you have before you, you see our baseline budget for the next two years. For next year, as many of you know, if you've been back in the community room, there's two rooms in the PD, our briefing room and a community room, where we did some monitor project work, where we updated the televisions into monitors and new projection equipment, not only for the public but for the police department. We have more monitors and more work to be done in dispatch and in the supervisor's office. So that $20,000 is an allocation for that. There's two motorcycles that we're requesting out of the CFD. As you know, we have two motorcycles that are near the end of life, and so this represents the cost to replace both motorcycles. And then lastly, you already approved the reclassification of the captain, who is Captain Small, and so you see the difference in that. Because of our motorcycle request and the monitor, we'll run a projected deficit of $66,000 on, I think, a residual of about, or a fund balance of about $600,000 that's sitting in that fund now. However, there's a slight surplus in the second year. And then if we can go to the next slide. And then in Measure R, I informed Measure R of these items in this next year's budget in our last Measure R meeting, so they've heard these items. And so the request is for an additional CSO. Currently, we had the position that was filled by TJ Gaddati. We've refilled a new member of the department in that position, but we're looking to add a second CSO to support the patrol operation and to provide some flexibility specifically for the weekend events that we have on Saturdays without asking people to work, you know, six days a week, kind of on the regular, when we have a lot going on with community events. And so that gives us some flexibility to provide some support to the patrol operation. So in total, there'll be coverage for the CSOs six days a week. That can help with our graffiti abatement and other activities. When the one CSO is on vacation, that work can continue. And so the request in Measure R, because that is a new position, has not been filled by the city, is reflected there. Telecommunications, actually, you approved the cell phone deployment to the officers in conjunction with the body-worn cameras. This is placed in the budget because we had to add it in. It wasn't added in our baseline when we started the program, so that's reflective of that. I will tell you that we are going to move away from landline voicemail boxes, and their cell phones will be that, so there'll be some savings on the backend. That transition's not complete, so I can't quantify what the overall savings will be, or the offset will be, but there will be some in the budget. Lights for patrol rifles was a project out of the Leadership Development Program that we did this last year, and that's reflected there. That Axon system actually is, is our interview rooms. So, and Axon's the wrong term there, but it's an audiovisual system. That building, built in 2003, has 2003 technology, and so we need to update to high-def recording equipment, video and audio. And so that is an estimate for one system that we're looking at. The drones you've already approved, that's just a placeholder carried over because it's not in the baseline. It's reflected here this next year. We're looking at adding a second SWAT officer to the Elk Grove Galt SWAT team, and then some additional training equipment with airsoft guns and a FLIR. That's the $15,000. The Safe Exchange Camera Program was another leadership development program. Actually, Detective Kroger worked on that. And that's wherein you can do either child custody exchanges or sales of property or equipment at the police department under the watchful eye of a camera, so at least it's all memorialized and captured, so there's no issues. Or it's a safe place. Let's just leave it there. Bicycle Patrol, we have one officer assigned to that as the lead. That will add three additional officers. That number's reflected there. Capital replacement is actually the annual contribution to the body-worn camera program. That's our annual payment. That's not a capital replacement, but it's in the capital account, and that's our annual payment for that. And then the patrol vehicles, actually, we're only requesting two patrol vehicles this next year, not three. And so that's reflective of two patrol vehicles being purchased. In this full book of business, there would be deficit spending because there's so much capital equipment in there this, for this next year of $200,000 if we had all positions filled and spent every penny. However, there's about 1.8 million in residual in that account. And then you could see the following year, although I'm sure there'll be COLAs, the following year, there is a surplus identified. That's all I have. the following year, there is a surplus identified. That's all I have.
Chief Kalanowski, just because we have a lot of people in attendance, and we're talking about important budget stuff, in addition to everything you just mentioned, all the things that you're doing with Measure R funds here, what, just ballpark, you don't got to be exact, but roughly how many positions are, what's included in that baseline cost? Tell the public how many positions, dispatch, regular, we're talking about.
We, we currently fund seven police officers, one professional standards officer, one dispatcher, because we moved that analyst for body worn camera temporarily. And so we have one analyst, that was our dispatcher, funded out of Measure R, and then half a records clerk is funded out of Measure R on the personnel side.
And also the graffiti abatement program.
And the graffiti, yeah, that doesn't fund a person, that just funds the work, and that's been ongoing year after year.
Okay.
So one of those seven officers is one of your SROs is an example, one of them is a K-9 officer. So that's within the body of work, but it's seven actual officers.
So the SR is a school resource officer.
Yes.
So what I'm, what I'm getting, I think is important in conversations ongoing with our budget is that, that this Measure R, for those of you that don't know, is the half-cent sales tax measure that was passed by the GALT voters in 2008. So a half cent of our sales tax goes to this fund, which pays for all these things, including everything that Chief Kalanowski just mentioned. So I, I, I can't stress enough about how, how imperative, I mean, just imagine for yourself, if we had not supported that in 2008, all these things, it would be gone, including all those officers, the graffiti abatement, the school resource officer, all these things that you're doing here would all be, wouldn't exist.
It would be a different community, a different organization, for sure.
Well, I don't, I don't have any questions, and it continues to grow. As sales tax grows, it grows, right?
Yeah, you could see the revenue is up to somewhere in there, I saw the number.
Went for.
I guess it's on the first slide that Mr. Heinz had, but it's like 2.3 million a year in revenue on a half-cent sales tax.
All right, do we have any, Mr. Heinz, you just say something?
I was just going to say, that's, that's correct.
Yeah. Any questions for Chief Kalanowski on the Measure R of the police budget?
Not the question, just a thank you, Chief Kalanowski gave us a good presentation. That's a very, like, in simple bicycle patrol, did we have currently any bicycle patrolling?
Officer Castaneda is a trained bicycle patrol officer, and he will use that bicycle. And he's, and we've identified three members of the department, and upon approval and implementation of the budget on July 1st, we'll work to get those folks trained and the equipment in place.
Okay, the other thing, clarification, patrol vehicle, we buying two and $140,000?
Yes, there are about $70,000 apiece to purchase and equip. The vehicle alone is about $40,000.
Thank you.
Yes.
Once we do those additional two patrol cars with the nine that we, is this part of the nine that we approved in 2018, or is this addition to those nine?
This is just the continuing rotation, and because we did a lot of good work, we identified not having the need to do three marked units this year. So that's why I only requested two, because it wasn't needed.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to just mention, with the general fund budget, we requested funds to set up an internal service fund, which not only drives maintenance and upkeep of the PD's vehicles, but also supports the replacement of the vehicles. So it's my hope that the next round of replacements, we, we will have saved up for those, and so the chief doesn't have to go through special motions and actions to get those. They will simply be on the schedule, and he will know when those vehicles are coming at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Thank you, sir. I think with no other question, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
And next up, we have Public Works. And for those folks listening at home, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that each of our departments, not each, but our departments are funded by multiple funds. So of those 27 funds, the PD is supported by at least four or five funds, including the general fund. Now, Mike Selling, our Public Works Director, is up next, and he sort of takes the prize for being supported by the most funds. And so he's not only supported by general fund appropriation, his operations are not only supported by general fund appropriations, but you're about to get a nice overview of some of the utilities and the enterprise funds that also support his operations. And I'll leave it to you, sir.
All right, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So as you can see on the slide, Public Works is largely composed of three main divisions. Our utilities division, which is our water and wastewater, and then the facilities, what we refer to as the facilities maintenance division. That includes the streets maintenance, the distribution of the water, basically the pipes out in the streets, and then the collection on the wastewater, again, the pipes in the streets there. Storm drainage, of course, our central shop, which is what maintains all the vehicles, and then our building maintenance to maintain the city's facilities. The last division there is the engineering division, which covers our capital improvements program, our development services, which we work hand in hand with Community Development Department, and then some technical services. Next slide. So kind of, this will be a, kind of a quick overview of the main enterprise funds that Public Works is in charge of. So the first one here is on the storm drainage side. This is essentially just taking care of, of the water, you know, that occurs when we have rain events, which are fewer and fewer, it seems unfortunately. But we do have some, some ongoing maintenance that, that you're, you're seeing as far as some of the baseline changes there. We've got some drain inlet, DI stands for drain inlet, upgrades that we've got to do. Some of those standards have changed, and, and some of them are old and just in need of replacement. And then just some capacity improvements, we've got a couple of older lines that need to be upsized a bit, so. So that's that. Next slide. So the next is on the water enterprise fund, which is Fund 5. And so what you'll see there is, there's some significant increases on the water side. We've got a well rehabilitation that's making up a big chunk of that. We've got some old water well sites, some of our more shallow wells that we really don't use anymore because they're, they're higher in, in some of the parameters that we don't meet the, the levels required by the state. For instance, arsenic, so, which occurs in some of the shallower formations. So we're going to be decommissioning some of those, those older well sites. That's part of it, too, and then you see the ongoing maintenance. And then some of our instrumentation over at our cost plant, we're going to be upgrading that. So, next slide, please. So then on to the wastewater side. So the wastewater, as you can see, there's, there's a whole list of things there in the CIPs from a sewer camera trailer. So this is the piece of equipment that we use to, when, when we get reports of blockages or potentially leaks in lines, that we can send the camera system down there. One we've got is very old, and, and it's been very essentially non-functional for, gosh, I'd say over a year and a half or so. So, so we'll be getting a new one of those, hopefully, that's in the budget. The sledge pad, this is something that came down from the state that we have to put a cover over our sledge pad to protect it from the rain, which, which also will make it a more efficient operation, too. So that's a significant CIP. The chemical facility, which I think you've heard a little bit about in the past, again, these are changes to improve the plant operations and, and improve our effluent to stay within state requirements. We've got some computer systems that are requiring some IT upgrades, kind of thing. And I know you heard when we talked about the ARPA funding before, about the VACON, which is the, the vacuum truck that is the critical, probably the most critical piece of equipment that we have, and how old the current one is, and we're replacing that, which we were great, grateful that the council approved that appropriation. And we'll be coming back to you with the recommendation on the bid for that, I think, at the next meeting, in fact. But also, where we dumped the VACON out at the treatment plant site, that is old and, and the concrete's cracking and whatnot, we need to replace it. We'll also be making it much more efficient, so it won't, it'll be, you know, pretty quick and easy to clean, kind of thing. Right now, it's not, not so much, so. Next slide. So the last one here is on the solid waste side, and you can see that there's a little bit of an increase next year. And I know probably a couple of council members who are on the ad hoc committee are well aware that we've been working on implementing to be compliant with the state mandate, which is known as SB 1383. This is the organics recycling mandate, and so that there is some additional costs, obviously, associated with that effort. So you see that in '23, and then hopefully, as, as that program is implemented, we should see costs back down a bit. So I think that is it for line.
All righty. Well, thank you, Director Selling, and let's go to the next slide. And that concludes the formal presentation of the selected funds that we wanted to present to council. We're open to any questions that you may have. Again, there are more funds, but we felt that these funds and the changes in those funds warranted bringing this to your attention in sort of a public airing. But if there are other funds that you want to speak to, let me know.
So this time, we're going to circle back to the parks.
We'll do that right now, just wanted to make sure we were.
Any questions for, any questions for Mr. Selling from the council, from Public Works?
Okay.
Do we have any, actually, we're still in the presentation. So again, if anybody's wanting to make public comment on this item in general, fill out a speaker card, left and right in the back, bring it forward.
First of all, I apologize for not getting up earlier and speaking at the podium. I just kind of lost it there for a second. So today, we're going to talk to you guys about landscape services. I'm going to give you a little background. In 2019, City Council reduced landscape services in a cost-saving measure from weekly to once a month, and to, to prunings a year to one. Landscape contract was awarded to Crossroads Facilities. Then in October 2020, they opted out of that contract, and they were, told us we were, they were no longer able to provide service to us. The city then brought in the services in-house, but we increased the mowings in our parks from one time a month to two times a month for the same price. In 2021, the city went out to an RFP, and the service levels were going to be two park services a month, one landscape per month, and one pruning per year. The city received one bid in the amount of $593,000. Now, that number's going to be important as I go through this presentation, because what we did is we took the square footage, what the cost would be for landscaping, and we applied it for the service level, so you can kind of get an apples-to-apples cost of what we're, what we would be charging versus going to an outside company. So over the last several months, City Council has asked staff to come back with service level updates. So this is what, what we're doing now. So that.
Got to turn it on.
What's that?
Turn it on.
Turn it off?
On.
So Director Solis, so we're, we're actually running the slides over here. So we have a slide here that summarizes the, the different levels of service that Director Solis are getting, is getting ready to go through. We thought we might present it in a summary fashion, forgive the font issue there at the top. But Director Solis will be going through these in detail.
So that, that number that I was talking about, that $593,000, that's for the two parks a month, one landscaping and one per month. We've taken this dollar amount per square foot, and we've applied it to what we're doing. So what you see here is, this is what we're currently doing, two parks, this is all in-house. This is the staffing that we're doing it with for that amount here compared to what was, the proposal was from Terracare. That's current staffing. So what we're proposing in 2023, we're going to add one full-time person and move the two part-time people from parks workers to parks maintenance worker for a total of four. We're adding one person and upgrading two positions. That cost is 420,000, again, compared to that level here. So increasing level costs. You see here, we're still doing parks twice a month, but we've upgraded the landscaping to twice a month versus the once. So you're talking Corillian, you're talking, excuse me, not Corillian, Walnut, Marengo, Lincoln Way, those areas there are now done twice a month versus once a month. And what we've done here is we've added three full-time people and one additional part-time person. That's the dollar amount. Now, this dollar amount with Terracare, is what we've done, is we've taken the square footage, adding that extra landscape, and this is what we estimated it to be. Now, if they bid it, it, it could be different, it could be the same. We took that $593,000 and the square footage that they had for what they bid, that's what we applied that, that's where we got that number.
Just for, just for reference, Mr. Solis, when was that bid submitted?
July 2020 of last year.
Okay, so it's two years old.
One year old.
So, okay, well.
Yeah, less than one year old. So option two, we go back to our original level service. Parks, four times a month, landscape, you know, weekly, everything's done weekly. We go back to two prunings a year. With that, we're going five full-time people, we're dropping the one part-time down to three. Our cost, $906,000. If we went with the landscape square footage by Terracare that they provide us, provided us, it'd be over 2 million. So in an effort to compare the service costs with City of Elk Grove and the City of Lodi, staff learned that each organization does it differently. City of Lodi, the parks, they do their parks. The landscaping, the streetscapes are contracted out, and they're maintained, they're, the contract is overseen by the Public Works Department. City of Elk Grove, they pay a portion of an overhead cost to the contractor for the staffing. And in their email, they specifically said that overhead expenses for all employees involved in the city-owned landscaping, they do not identify what those are, but they are a significant cost to the City of Elk Grove. They didn't tell us what they are, so we couldn't take their contract and compare to ours because they're adding another number on top of that that isn't included in that contract. So trying to compare us to Elk Grove or us to Lodi really wasn't fair to give you those comparisons and numbers. So with that said, in 2013, MRG came up with a, the attached staff report. And due to the different methods throughout the city, staff is recommending that we contract with, I call them MRS, to update that report and provide a recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
I have a question. So if we can go back to the overview slide, that would probably work the best. Have you done the cost of these four columns or five columns? Those are for full-year service at those levels, right?
Yes.
Has anyone done an analysis of what option one for, let's say, seven months, and option two for the remaining months would cost?
No, we did not.
So that might be a nice middle ground, you know, during the spring months, we have an opportunity to mow the lawns because they're growing twice as fast. But in the, in the hotter summer months when grass is, or in the winter months when grass really isn't growing much, we could adjust our maintenance a little bit, help trim costs, you know, I mean, this is important to get correctly, correct, but it's also wise to save money where we can. So note that 900,000 in the last column, you know, if that could get dropped down to, you know, 750,000, 700,000, that would be a huge difference in, in our already tight budget.
Can, if I can answer that question. So most contracts with landscapers, and including RFP that Terracare did bid on, it reduces the number of mowings to as needed, November through March. So most contracts are already going to do that. They account for the less mowing per week in the, in the colder seasons.
Okay, but, but they on, on every slide you showed, they're like basically double of what we can do in-house, right?
Right, and, and we don't mow on a regular basis in the, in the winter months either. We pull our crew off, and we start doing a lot of our pruning.
Okay, so that's a great point. So what you're saying, and let's say in option two, the last column, the four, four and two, that is taking into account certain months where you're not actually doing four, four and two?
We would do it if needed, you know, as you know, we're in a drought. It's not raining as often, it's not as cold. So if we have to mow, we still have to mow our sports fields typically weekly, just to have them playable. But. But we, there are times we would not mow every week, we'd probably go to every two weeks and then use those staff members to help prune the areas like Marengo and Twin Cities.
Okay, so essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially what you're saying is that option two is not always four, four and two, but it is always expected, what the citizens would expect maintenance to be, for lack of a better term. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Solis, I, and you kind of answered my question a little bit, but I was just doing some quick math here and I was thinking, you know, if you were doing in-house, you said we brought the mowing back to twice a month instead of from once a month. You were able to do it twice a month, mowing back in-house. So using that number as twice a month, we're basically getting 24 mows. I mean, I know this is not, it's not this simple, but I'm just, this is an idea, just to bear with me here. So if we're getting 24 mows, and I broke out months thinking like, you know, your prime months are going to be spring, like March, April, May. You know, you lived here long enough, you know those are the, the grass is growing the fastest. Then you have your June, July, August, September and October, which I consider summer even though October is fall, but technically in our, in our climate, October can still be hot. So those five months would be summer. And then you have your four winter months, November, December, January and February, which obviously you don't mow that much, probably not, don't need to require that much. So if you were to disperse and do those, the parks during those four months, once a month, because you probably, the grass, you know, you don't need to, and read, and then do through March and April, May, which is the spring, you could mow actually every single week. So you get 12 mows out of those three months. Then it leaves you the five months and you have 10 mows left to, or eight mows left to give, so it'd be 1.6 average. So it seems like, kind of what Jay was saying is like, and I'm sure you guys probably thought of this, but is there a way to tweak your schedule where you're like, you know, you need to hit it hard on, in the, in the spring because that's when things are the worst and growing the fastest and, and back off down to the single mows maybe in the, you know, in those other months?
I would not recommend going to once a month mowing. You will get the calls that you're getting now. The level of service would not be acceptable to our citizens. We utilize the, that group, we're counting to utilize that group in the slow time to prune to help, which is different than just a regular maintenance. A regular maintenance of our landscape is we're hedging the trees, pulling them back away from the sidewalks, cleaning the area, cleaning out bushes. Now, the pruning, we're coming through and we're chopping things down, we're shaping things up, we're cutting the trees away from the sound wall, we're really doing a deep cleaning during those times. And those times are very hard, very manually intense, where you need those bodies to do that at that time. Again, I do not recommend, even in the winter months, mowing our parks once a month.
Okay.
We'll get calls on that.
So, so in your opinion, what you're showing us here, does this represent, now again, I mean, this has been a discussion for like, I mean, many years before I was on the council, you know, everybody wanting a certain level. And unfortunately, we had to take some major steps backwards in 19 with our budget cuts. But now here we are and, and this is a can that I personally, I think the council, we're just refusing to kick this down the road and we're trying to bring. So what is getting it up to like, to get into a level where I don't hear people coming to me and complaining about a park anymore, what does that look like? Does it look like what we're looking at here?
It's option two.
Option two is that?
But not right away. You have to allow us a time to catch up on the pruning. So after a calendar year, you would, I would hope that you would not get any complaints, but things happen, staff shortages, equipment shortages. If I have everybody, I have everything, I have all the tools, I have everything here, you shouldn't get any complaints.
So a lot of factors there. So assuming that you get the people you want, well, assuming that we give you, we approve the people that you want and give you that staff, and then assume that we can get people to hire in those positions, which is another conversation, but you know, obviously we're looking at all that. With all that being and the resources you need and a little bit of time to catch up, you feel like this program is the program that would, would, would give the, the city a landscape level that, that you think that the majority of the citizens of Gaunt would be sufficient with?
I would have to have a really good reason to come up with if I couldn't, you know, come up and stop those complaints.
Okay.
I mean, it's what we need. Armando Morales, our parks supervisor is here. This is something that he and I went over along with Leslie Sheets, who's done, and thank you, Leslie. Leslie did all these numbers that you guys are seeing today, she did an incredible job on, on these numbers. We all feel comfortable, you can ask them yourselves. Armando's going to be the one who's going to have to oversee this group, so if you want to ask him now.
I mean, and I appreciate you guys both being here. Mr. Morales, do you, what, what do you think, in your opinion, being the guy who's out there, and I've seen you out there, and even on weekends sometimes, out there with your guys, you know, leading by example, which is important, what do you think in your opinion is the biggest challenge? And again, you could answer this, but I'm asking you because, you know, you're in the front line. What do you think is the biggest challenge that you guys face right now in keeping up with the maintenance? Is it a lack of bodies? Is it lack of equipment? What is it?
It's lack of bodies. We train them and we use them to other states. So basically, just the retention is the challenge. And then I have to supplement, I have eight guys and I have a plan for eight guys to be in certain areas, but then to call and sit, and I have to adjust those five to go here, 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 here. So we do end up skipping certain areas and that's where the public sees, hey, they skipped this, but they don't know that sadly was.
What do you think the averages vacancy on your crews that do the, I mean, are you, are you full at some times and then down, or are you always averaging maybe one down? What's, what's a consistent, what would be a safe thing to say?
I believe we've been full for, what, three years? But, you know, we just lost a full-time person to Davis. We're about to hire his replacement. It's going to be an internal candidate, which means that now I have to backfill his part-time position. Recently, we had a person no show, no call for three days. You know, they just don't show up, you know?
And what do some of these positions pay roughly?
So I'm upgrading two of these positions from rec work or parks workers, which is minimum wage, to parks maintenance workers where they start at $18 an hour.
Okay. And do you, so in your opinion, you, I mean, it's, it's, retainment is a problem right now. I mean, that's, that's basically, so even, so again, this is a double, this is a double thing here because even if we approve these positions and say we'd like to go with option whatever, we have to then, there has to be work on the backside because if we're still struggling with, with retainment.
And, and that's why you see more of the full-time jobs that we're asking for versus the part-time.
Okay.
We have more luck with the full-time, keeping a full-time person. Are we keeping them five, 10, 15 years? No, but we're keeping this last one. We had four years, four years. So we have that same person four years. Obviously, we trained him, we had him certified, we had him going, and then he became attractive to somebody who pays a lot more money.
So my last question, since you're out there and I think there's a lot of people watching, is could you just quickly explain, because it ties right into what we just, some of my questions. Currently, as you know, biggest, big pet peeve of mine is the fact that we haven't been spraying weeds. Weeds are really bad right now in town, like really bad. And would you like to just quickly just tell the public why we're not doing that right now?
So we do not have a certified sprayer on our staff, Parks and Rec or Public Works. We've lost ours, they've moved, either retired or moved on. We were having two of our staff members test during the study and preparing for the test. They took different jobs. So now we have two other people, including Armando, actually studying for the test. We have one person ready to take the test, we have paid the fees to the state, and we cannot get the state to return our call to give us a date to take that test. Armando was proactive, went down to the local office, asked them, hey, we're trying to get this person certified, this is the number we're calling, and they said, yep, that's the right number. Unfortunately, I don't have any other contact. So we're calling, 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 we can't get them to answer the phone. So we're trying to get them certified and we're trying to get them out there.
Okay, well, I appreciate you sharing that information. I know it's really frustrating. Is any of the council, I'll give it up to somebody else if you have questions.
I just have one quick question. What is, you know, what's the added cost of constant retraining? Is it significant, maybe, I'll just put it that way?
I, I think the biggest cost is the hiring cost, the fingerprinting, the physical, you know, we, the training is basically a week to two weeks.
Yeah. It's pretty much everybody involved, HR has to be involved with the hiring costs. We have to, everybody involved, that's pretty much the cost.
You, you guys are just used to doing it over and over.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, I can add to the question about the QAC or qualified.
Armando, can you turn on your mic and?
Sorry about that. We're not the only city dealing with the shortage in the qualified applicators because I contacted the City of Lodi and the City of Lodi is actually dealing with the same thing right now. It's just different because they're, they're contracted out through Public Works, so they do all the landscaping, so it's less noticeable on their part than with us, because we have to do the streetscape. So everybody's struggling with that right now. They, they get certified, they move on to better pay.
Armando, you told me in our conversation that we had recently that you've thought it best, like you mentioned with Mr. Morales getting trained, if you train your higher-ups, then there's less likely, when you're losing people at the bottom because of the turnover that you have, then there's, it's kind of like a safety net. You guys can't, you can't have, we can't have a supervisor licensed and then have people spray under his control. Each person that they're touching the stuff has to be certified. Because I was told someone that you had one person licensed, they could work under his license.
We did at that point, but you would have to have somebody willing to allow their license to be used. And right now, under the current climate, people aren't doing that. Even Mr. Morales said it, once he's certified and if he's the only one, he would be the only one spraying because it's his license that's on the line. So he would be the one spraying.
Mr. Solis.
Hold on, Mr. Vice Mayor, Kevin Pap and I was talking.
Yeah, go ahead.
The option two with the four, four and two, is that what we were doing before the cuts of 19?
Correct.
That would get us back to the standard.
Yes.
Okay. My goal for this area has been to first determine that we are doing the most efficient method. And my first request was whether that's partnering with CSD, whether that's contracting out, bringing it in-house, whatever. By the evidence here, it looks like we're pretty much on track that we've located and identified the most efficient way to provide service. You mentioned briefly the municipal resource group and having them upgrade the 2013 study, would that be another step in that direction to make sure that we're the most efficient we can be? Is that the idea with that?
That's the idea, sir.
Okay, all right. And this might be a question you can't answer, but with the certification for weed sprayers, any idea if that certification existed in 1990 when we implemented our LLDs that have no escalators and no increases?
I, I know we've had them throughout the years, specifically in 1990. No, I, I don't know with that year, but I know that we have had them. I know we just lost a long-term employee of 30-plus years that did have one. I don't know when he got it, but.
I'm just kind of thinking that that's one of the things that is an incredibly increased expense and state hoop to jump through that we now have to pay for, that this system was never designed to fund.
Right.
So, that's it for now.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Solis, a couple thing, just like a clarification. You know, that's RFP, when we done in, back in 2021 with the Terracare. When I looking at the map, it's look like if we're doing these option in-house is much cheaper than their contract, right?
Correct.
And did we get any other bid that time or that's the only bid?
That is the only one who submitted a bid. It was open up for at least two weeks, possibly three, and we only received the one bid. And a lot of the companies said that they did want to bid on a, on a, something where they're doing it every other month, you know, they wanted to do it on a weekly basis. A lot of them were having problems filling their spots in 2021 also. You know, we're in the middle of COVID, so it was kind of difficult for some of those people too.
So that's why we're doing in-house, I will let the public know because we save money if we're doing in-house instead of doing the contracts, right?
Right. When we, when Crossroads left and we saw the art, we, there was a desperate need for us to take over. Mr. Morales and I sat down, put our heads together and said, look, we can do this for this price. You know, we, we were in the middle of COVID, so a lot of our stuff wasn't, we didn't have our ballfields going, our rent, our centers going, programs going. So we utilized a lot of those guys to help obtain that two times per month. And that's why I'm asking for an increase if you guys leave it at the current level.
And, and then the, Mr. Solis, like, and if we do the option two, in your opinion, you still leaving this city for a long time, what do you think we'd be giving the public service is very satisfied level?
I would say probably 97% of our citizens would be happy.
Okay. The last question is, I know that's retaining the employees everywhere problem. Retaining the employee in your department, what you think is a salary problem, is morale or something else?
Armando, can you?
I just believe is we have temporary and part-time. I think if we increase the wages, I believe morale will increase with wages and we can retain those employees even longer. So that's basically, I think, the problem, where the problem falls is the temporary and part-time employees.
Thank you, and that's all.
Mr. Vanneburg, give a question?
Yeah, just real quickly, as we were talking, has, yeah, have we ever tried to just contract out the weed spraying? It seems like something, you know, if you could get it done in the spring, be a lot of, a lot of maintenance avoided. And if we don't have, you know, assuming we didn't have someone or someone decided to quit at a very inappropriate time, could you just contract out for 10 grand, somebody to come and do a job for two, three weeks and be done with it? Chemicals?
I'm not going to speak to it, but $10,000 is not going to cover what.
Well, I'm just, I just threw any random number out there, so you understood what I meant.
Well, go ahead.
I can answer that. So I, I reached out to Precida and Precida, they said they wouldn't give us a price, that they're just too busy, everybody's too busy to come out and spray. So I, I believe COVID was a factor in this, so nobody would want to take that on. So I don't really have a price for it, but nobody wants to take it on.
So Mr. Morales, do you think it's, you think there's a chance that you could find someone that would do that, just Precida? Or do you think, I mean, are you saying there's just no chance in finding someone that would, that would spray, just even on a one-shot deal?
I tried twice and no one returns my calls, no one gives me numbers, and if they do return my calls, they won't provide me with numbers.
Because, because what I'm looking for here is I'm just looking for like, I mean, we're coming into June now, the weeds haven't been sprayed in several months now. I mean, I think I started asking about the weeds probably over two months ago at least. Actually, it's probably in March, so, well, so two months. I mean, but, but the looks of what's going on with the, with the testing, with the sprayer and this and that, I mean, we just can't, we just simply cannot go into the summer, even though weeds probably will grow. I mean, I mean, there's weeds by my house that are two feet tall on the sidewalks. I mean, it's, it's, you know, and I know you guys all, like, I just want to say to the public, you guys are doing all you can with what you have, I get it, I understand that this is a frustrating situation with the weed thing. But what I'm trying to figure out is what, what is the solutions? Like, can we all put our heads together and figure out, what is the solution that we can get this taken care of? I personally, this, this MRP or whatever company is, I read their old report from 2013 and it seems like what they put together is that they come in and, and, you know, put an analysis together and say, you know, this is the way we think you guys should most efficiently take care of your landscaping. And from those reports, what I found was, there was all kinds of different options and it was, well, let's use this landscape company to do this, and then we'll use in-house to do this, and then we'll use this other landscape company to do X. And there was different variations of that. The problem I see with that is, if we were to have them come in and do this analysis, you know, it might seem like a good idea. Fine, let's come in and let's have someone, you know, analyze what we're doing and see how we can be more efficient. But it's going to cost us 50 grand to do that. Now, I know that consultants can be very valuable in some situations, you know, to look at either how to make more revenue and now analyzing how to make your business better or analyzing how to make your expenditures be down and make you run more efficient. But my, my thought is they come back and they say, here's what you should do. Well, those options are most likely going to include you guys using a combination of contracting whatever. As Mr. Morales said, we don't even know if we can even get somebody that's going to want to bid on these projects. So we might get handed a consulting, you know, here's, here's your 50 grand, here's your report, thank you very much, and we look at that report and we can't execute it because we don't have people that'll do it. Whereas in-house, if we just do with that and rely Whereas in-house, if we just do with that, and rely on someone like yourself, who's been running this department for how many years now?
Ten years, I think.
But you've been, ten years, Parks and Rec?
I've been with the city thirty-three years, but as a director, ten years.
And I don't think there's any, I mean, I think it's a bold statement, but I don't think there's anyone in this room that knows our parks, as well as Mr. Morales and Mr., and Mr. Solis. I don't think that we're going to get our bang for our buck with fifty grand to have somebody come in and try to say, "This is what we should do." I think we should let, let the people that know our city best and our parks rest. I think we should try to give them the resources they need, and figure out how we can make that work with our budget that we're working on right now, and, and give you guys what you need. As far as the weed spraying, I would like to hear some options, like, what is it, let's exhaust every means of finding a, a company that'll come in and do weed spraying for a one-shot deal. What does that look like? Is it fifty grand? Is it forty grand? Is it sixty grand? I don't know. But I'd like to know what it is, because I'd like to have it done.
We could easily do an RFP if you'd like, but please keep in mind, an RFP is going to take a minimum of thirty days, Mike.
Is there, is there any other method of weed spraying we could do, besides spraying? I mean, what about, I mean, have people used, like, blow torches, they've pulled, I mean, there's got to be some other way besides just spraying.
You could authorize overtime, and I could see if our guys would come in on the weekends and just do it with a weed eater and keep things knocked down. Off the top of my head, I don't know what that would cost to get us back in, into shape, and how long it would take. I'd really have to sit down and look into it, but, you know, the choice is, I mean, we could do an RFP, because this, I know it will be over thirty thousand dollars to do the city. So...
Well, again, I, I think, this is just me personally speaking, I think there's, we can try to make that money work in a different angle right now. It would be, for me, it'd be more productive to mitigate at least the weed, and maybe, you know, do whatever until we can figure out this budget situation, and figure out, well, we're going to give you guys for resources. One last statement I just want to make here, since we're on the subject, is, look, there's two, the two most important things that, I recently walked neighborhoods with a candidate who's running for one of our local offices, and I spoke to probably, you know, three hours of talking to people. And the number two things, which I already knew beforehand, was the most important things people in Galt is public safety and what their city looks like. And it was like, why is that park not getting mowed? Why does Curly and Boulevard look like that? Or why can't I, whatever, we heard from some folks and I about the dog park. People care, they care about being safe, and they care about their city looks like. And I know there's a lot of other important things in the city that, that go on behind closed doors that are super important, that they just don't see. And unfortunately, we just don't get credit for that. But people are optic, there's a visual thing that they like to see, they like to see their taxpayers, their tax money being spent on something that they can see. And if you're someone who has kids and sports, or if you go to the park every week, or you, you're a senior citizen who walks your dog, or you know what, maybe you don't even come out of your house, you're saying, "I don't give, you know, heck about parks." But if you live in the city and you have a home and you live here, then keeping the city looking nice, and, and being presentable, and people taking pride of their community is going to affect you. It affects your property value, it affects, it affects people wanting to come here and buy a home. When they come off the freeway and they say, "Hey, let's go check out a, a model home at KB Homes over here in the new subdivision we're building," they come off the freeway and they see a median says, "Welcome to Galt," and the weeds are four feet tall. What does that say about our community? I mean, that's the first thing I look at when I go into a neighborhood to buy a house, is what the yards, people's yards look like. So when I go into a new city, what am I going to look at? So I think we should be putting maximum effort behind getting this back to where it needs to be, so the people of this town can see where their tax money's going, and they can be proud of their community that it looks nice. And I just want to throw that in there, since we're on the subject. Thanks.
And I would follow on to that, as I've said before, that I believe this affects every member of the community, regardless if they're in the majority that pays zero for the LLDs, or lighting and landscaping and so forth, or in one of the three that pay an insufficient amount. We talk about things being kicked down the road, this has been a long time. And, you know, it, it does affect every, every member, every property owner of the community, and it's probably time that we took this issue head-on. We either have the option of trying to come up with more general fund money to backfill this unequal system, or we have to, I guess, go back to the voters and come up with a one-size, you know, a citywide LLD, if you will, to fund things equally. And that's not going to be popular, but if we really want it, and people really want it to look that way, those are our options. We keep, keep with this sloppy funding system, or we put something in place that's going to be self-sufficient.
May I add something else? I just want to bring up to you guys that majority of my staff is pretty much local. They're, they're from Galt. They take pride in what they do, and they go beyond. Sometimes they come into the break, the break room, they're tired, I see them, the fatigue just gets them, and, you know, to come the next day and, and hear, you know, negative remarks, like, "Well, these guys are just driving from here to here." It saddens me, it, it just, it's hard to hear that when you're working hard with the resources that you're given. And my, I just want to thank all my staff for doing what they're doing out there.
Yeah, I want to thank them, too. I'm periodically awakened at seven AM on Sunday morning.
I apologize for that.
And I don't mind, because I know that's, that's what you guys have for staff, and that's how thin you have to stretch them, and you got to get them out there at, at all hours of the day. So, yeah, my hat's off to them, too. And we need to triple the budget to get back to where we need to be, from the three-ten to the nine-oh-six. And we got to figure out a way to do it. And by "we," I mean the whole city.
I want to say, you guys, I've seen you guys out there on holiday weekends, and pulled over and said, "Hey, thanks for what you're doing." I mean, it's, they're out there and they're really doing all they can. I mean, I just want to say that the people that are watching this have to understand that we're, they're only working with what you guys have. It's a tough gig. And honestly, you know, what we're paying, like we talked about staff, I mean, you know, it's hard to find people that want to go out in the hot sun and weed eating, mow grass. I mean, I, I don't mind doing that kind of thing, but there's a lot of people that, you know, they could go work at, you know, Dutch Brothers or McDonald's or something, paying seventeen, whatever bucks an hour, and you can sit around and get a free lunch, and, you know, post selfies of yourself on the phone and whatever, you know, it's, it's, I'm not saying those are easy jobs, but, you know, it's not out in the sun, working and sweating, weed eating, it's not. And it's brutal. And so we need to make sure, we need to figure out a way to compensate those people where they're, they're proud of what they're making, and proud of what they're doing. I don't think we have any other, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have. Harry Wenzel.
Mr. Wenzel?
Harry Wenzel, retired, live over on Parks Drive, take a lot of walks, too. Let me tell you, thank your crew. I see them over there at Walker Park. Those guys are literally running. And this, this is just, it's amazing how hard they work. And the parks are looking good, in my opinion, but I know that, you know, certain times they do. So, a couple of things. Overall, I like the, since it's an opportunity to kind of give a little public input to the department heads, the directors and so forth. I like, I like this presentation. I like what Mr. Heinz did, where he said, "I'm going to do a back-of-the-envelope." That means a lot, I think, to the public. It simplifies it, and it says, you know, "When a new house goes in, this is what we can expect," and maybe a little further like, you know. "We're only going to get a third of that property tax going to the general fund," or some number like that. So, I, I like that. I'd like to see things like anchor, anchor-type numbers, anchor-type calculations go onto the Galt website. I think that gives the opportunity for citizens to look at things in a different way. And if they could get used to it, I know Mr. Heinz had talked about the University of Galt, and I like that idea, too. And it is hard for people to see how hard the city workers work. And I get a special appreciation when I come here and I see the directors get up, and they really know their area. And it's a tough problem, you know, they're, they're trying to do it. So, can I speak on, just, I, I put in for LLD and Parks and Rec. Is it okay if I address all of those?
Yeah, that is the subject, council.
Okay, and I'll, I'll go fairly quickly here. I'll just talk about LLD first. It's an interesting subject. I was doing some research on it. I don't know whether that's just a gift to the city in a way, because these people pay the same property tax, plus they pay their LLD. That was their deal when they got into it, is that you were going to have your property tax, and you were going to have your LLD. So, I think the city has to look at it a couple of ways. I don't think you could just take away that LLD money. You guys keep paying it, and it gets spread amongst everybody. But they do pay as much as I pay, and as much as other taxpayers pay. So, that's just a thought about the LLD. I don't have an answer. You guys are doing the heavy lifting on that. Parks and Rec, looking at the numbers, I'd like to see in some form a little more transparency with the Galt market and its contribution. It's an important contribution. I'm sure it's net over a million every year. That's a nice, that's a nice thing. And then also, at some point, a little more than curiosity, I would like to see how that overhead charge that comes from the general fund back to the market, the composition of it. The last time I had an opportunity to talk to Tom Hegland about it, it's, it's kind of a magical number. And if you talk about doing things with the Galt market, you really need to have that number in hand. So I would like to see that work towards... And that's my comments. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel.
Okay, thank you. Everybody's just doing a great job. These, these council meetings are really interesting. I appreciate it.
Just to answer your question, sir, it's about 1.3 million net, it's a market, give or take. I mean, it changes a little bit, but that's after expenses. I do have a question, Mr. Heinz, and, and I had this in my notes, but he reminded me of it. So I would like to hear about, you know, the essential service cost has been this thing has been floating around since like seventeen, we've been asking about twenty-three-point-three percent, I think, is the percentage, you know, so Parks and Rec, all the departments pay essential service cost to the general, to the, they pay into it, and that includes for legal costs, whatever costs it used to be, direct allocation, which would mean if Parks and Rec needed something from Public Works, they would, Public Works would come do it, and then they would bill Public Works so that the department would be compensated. And at some point, well, actually, not some point, when Mr. Jean Palazzo was in here, our city manager from two, two managers ago came in, he decided that a central service cost or a cost allocation study was better than a direct allocation. And so they came up with a formula from a consultant that came in, came up with the twenty-three-point-three percent, which equates to like, I don't know, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or something, that Parks and Rec pays. If you break that down to twelve months, it's like fifty or sixty thousand dollars a month. So, what's frustrating is that it's kind of a mute point, because the general fund pays and picks up the slack for the, for the, for the, for the Parks and Rec anyways. But I've said it in the past, not since you've been here, Mr. Heinz, but, you know, we used to complain about, "Oh, the Parks and Rec, you know, it's just dragging the general fund down, you have to chip in a million dollars every year." Well, it wasn't for that eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar essential service cost, Parks and Rec could almost be breaking even. And so, it's a frustrating number, because it's like, what are we, what are they really getting for their fifty-something thousand dollars a month? I don't know if we should reevaluate. Mr. Hagen was going to reevaluate and look at that number, and, but it never, it never happened. I don't think he ever did, or didn't have the time to, or whatever. But I, I'm just wondering if the essential service cost that we're doing, and the percentages that we're doing, and the method that we're using, is really the right thing. I don't know, it's just a thought, based on Mr. Wenzel's comment. So, maybe that's a discussion for another day, Mr. Heinz, but something to think of. Do we have any other public comment on this item?
Phyllis Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
Phyllis Johnson, and I heard a word here that kind of piqued my interest. Local. We were talking about different licensing and certifications. We have landscapers here in town that are duly licensed. They even will put out their license on Facebook, you know, or whatever. Why not approach them for seasonal stuff, like you were saying, the spraying of the weeds or whatever? Bring them in, bring them here local. It would be a lot less money, and they'll be right here. We wouldn't have to worry about where they're coming in from or whatever. Promote local talent, overgoing somewhere else and first certify them and whatever, which is expensive. And I know that, because I worked licensing and certification for the state of California. Yeah, it gets you to be very expensive. So why not utilize who we have here? That's my thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Johnson. I, I do know that we go out to RFP, local companies are given the opportunity, correct me if I'm wrong, to bid on, when we do landscaping, and we just, I don't know if we've ever gotten a local and even tried to apply. Maybe it's just, maybe the scope of work that we're asking for is just way over what they could possibly handle. I think that's probably what it is, because we're talking about twenty-one parks, and that's not talking about streetscapes, you know, around City Hall, I mean, I can go on and on, they know all the numbers. But it's, it's a massive amount of work. I just think that local companies probably, I wish we could, but... So we have any, so we're still on budget discussions, right, this item? Do we have any further discussion from council? Questions for Mr. Heinz? Questions for any of the department heads?
So if there are no questions, I just wanted to conclude this presentation and let the public know and the council know. We will be back to discuss the, continue this discussion on June second, with a special budget workshop for the council and for the public who, who wants to join us. And we'll be covering the entire budget again. We'll be releasing the actual budget book, probably next Monday, sometime between tomorrow and next Monday. And it has all the detail behind all of these numbers. So, but we wanted to, in the May third and tonight, get you the essential meat of the budget. And we'll be releasing the actual budget book here pretty soon.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know, just to circle back, I didn't know if, if any of the council made a comment on my, my remarks about the, I know we can probably talk about it again on June seventh, but I just didn't know the feeling about the fifty thousand consulting fee that, well, did anybody have anyone to weigh in on that? I know Mr. Pap and I kind of touched on it a little bit. So, I guess we can continue that discussion when it comes time, but I just wanted to see if Mr. Heinz is, is getting direction from us that we would like to do that, or?
If you don't mind, I, I didn't respond when you made your initial comments. So the, the only reason that we wanted to recommend that we brought MRG back in is that report that we attached to the staff report was from 2013. Conditions were vastly different then. The availability of contractors was vastly different then. And so, we wanted to take a look and have them take a look at our current circumstance. This issue with landscape maintenance has been dogging us for at least ten to fifteen years, that I can see, and it's probably been longer than that. So the initial thought was, let's get this contract together, together with Armando, both Armandos and the team, and see if they can come up with a solution that allows us to go forward permanently, and a service level that grows with our needs, but that mechanism will be in place, and this no longer becomes an issue that we have to deal with every year. I want a permanent solution to this problem. And so, that's why I recommended, let's get, let's get MRG, and the guy from MRG is, is a parks guy as well. So I figured, if I got both, if I got all these folks together, they come up with a good plan, we put that plan in place, and then we can move forward. It would also give the public some additional confidence that not only are we looking at the expertise of our internal staff, but we're also looking at the expertise of folks outside of the city. And so that's, that's why that was in the budget. I had proposed that we would use ARPA money for that, given that parks maintenance came up as the number-one request from the public when we did the community survey. I figured this was a good use of the ARPA fund, so there was no general fund being proposed. But, and it would be up to fifty thousand dollars. So, if they can do it for twenty, great, because they're essentially updating this report. But I thought it would be great to have that additional expertise in helping us solve this problem. Otherwise, my concern is, it's going to keep dogging us until we get it settled.
And as you said, nobody knows the parks better than
Exactly.
Mr. Solis and Mr. Morales. And if they think this is a good idea, that, you know, could help them make sure that we're the most efficient that we can be with taxpayer money, then I'm all for dropping up to fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money to, to guarantee it.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Heinz. Although I just, I'm reluctant, I just don't, I just don't think, you were saying that you, fifty thousand, doing that would demonstrate to the public that we're looking into
Up to.
Up to fifty thousand. Well, right now, it's fifty. I mean, if it comes back and it's twenty, it may be different. But I think what it's showing us is that, for us to go out and get a consultant, is that we just, we're willing to spend
us is that for us to go out and get a consultant is that we just, we're willing to spend 50, you know, whatever, 20 grand, let's just call it 20, we're willing to spend any money that we don't trust in our staff enough to come up with that. I mean, I just don't, I just don't feel that, like, to have that done and then come back and the timeframe that that's going to take, and then we're going to come back and say, this is the way we think you should do it. I, I just don't think, you know, we...
Mr. Mayor, I, I know it's your time, but I, I've got to say this now. This request for a consultant has nothing to do with our confidence in the park staff. This is my version of getting all the right people in the right room to solve a particular problem.
All right. Well, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Well, what I'm saying is that I think that we could spend money in better places, and I think the situation we're right now, 50,000, you know, maybe it's 10,000, maybe come back and it's 10,000, maybe I'll think differently, but I, I just personally, and this is just me talking, this is not Mr. Vandenberg, this is not Mr. Papinell, this is not, this is not the vice mayor here. This is just me saying, I just don't think, I think the optics from the public is, we're going to spend 50 grand to have someone come in and tell us how we can do a better job when we can't even spray weeds right now. And I know that's a different reason, but it, that's the optics of the community. They're like, really? We're going to spend 50 grand? We can't even, we, you know, we, we are talking about people leaving because we don't pay them enough, but we're going to just drop 50 grand to have some come in, not from here, to probably give us the same report they gave us last time, telling us this is the way we should do it. Thank you very much. We'll take your check. And then we're going to be left to either decide to execute that, or the council might look at it and go, you know, we don't really like that, we don't want to do that. And then it was just all for, for void. So, look, I mean, we've been talking about using money for certain things. I think we need to be running lean. I think we need to be running lean and put money where it really counts. I don't think we need to spend 50 grand to, to have a consultant come in and tell us how to run our parks when we have knowledgeable people here. So, and again, that's just my opinion, and I get that we're going to agree, disagree, Mr. Heinz?
Well, it's, it's okay, and, and they're not going to tell us how to run our parks. Armando Solis tells us how we're going to run our parks. I'm just bringing in some expertise to help him out.
If, if I may, real quick.
Yes.
I think we should do both. I mean, the citizens deserve to get back to normal. They have, they're not receiving their normal maintenance that they pay for everything we have here, all salaries, all maintenance, all roads, they pay for it all. We're just trying to get back to normal. I think we should get back to normal as soon as possible, and only because it's ARPA funds, I would suggest that we put out an RFP. If it comes back at 10, $20,000, and they can make an analysis and we can further improve the system, I say we do that. That will, then we get a little of everything.
And, and for the folks listening, they can't come back with the same report because the options that they presented in 2013 are no longer, a, a lot of them are no longer available to us. So they're going to have to come back with a new plan.
All right. Well, if we don't have any further comment on this item, then we can move on. No, no public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
All right. We're going to move on next to item four, the COVID-19 Small Business Assistance and Recovery Grant Program from Ms. Mendez.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we are happy to present the COVID-19 Small Business Assistance Program. If you recall, earlier this week, or earlier this year, we presented, thank you, sir. We presented the, I'm sorry, this was last year. We presented a plan for distributing the first tranche of ARPA funds here at the city of Galt. One of those areas was the distribution of about 1.3 million for small business assistance. We have distributed quite a few funds thus far. A lot of those funds have been aimed toward community resources such as parks. We've distributed funds for the VACON machine, which protects our streets. And so we're, and we've also given $300,000 to CSD to support our firefighters. And so Amy Mendez is now here to present the next step in our ARPA plan, the Small Business Assistance and Recovery Grant Program. Ms. Mendez?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. As Lorenzo had mentioned, city council back in October directed staff to allocate $1.3 million of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to small business assistance in Galt. The ARPA funds may be used by municipalities to provide grants to local businesses which were negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We have evaluated multiple COVID-19 business assistance programs throughout California. I have actually talked to three different jurisdictions about their programs and, you know, best practices of what was implemented, lessons learned as they went through their programs, and have consulted with a subcommittee of the Galt District Chamber of Commerce as well, just to gather input and to make sure that what we are proposing is conducive to assist small businesses here locally, and also provides the amount of funding that would help them bounce back from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Oh.
Okay?
Yeah, you're good. I, I was just trying to help.
So the, in developing the program, we've actually come up with three different funding categories. I know it had been mentioned at one point by council that there would, there was a desire to assist some of the home-based businesses as well. So one of the categories that we are proposing is for home-based businesses. The other category would be targeted industries. Those are industries with increased impacts from the, to their operations due to the COVID-19 restrictions and requirements that were put in place back in 2020. These industries would be eligible for increased funding. Includes categories of hospitality, which is inclusive of the hotels here locally, entertainment and recreation uses, including dance and martial arts, gymnastics studios and other similar types of businesses. It includes restaurants, bars, drinking establishments and coffee shops. A lot of these industries were shut down completely for a while, dining rooms were closed, and so they were significantly impacted, as well as personal services. So hair salons locally, nail salons were shut down for quite a bit of time, fitness centers as well, and daycares, including adult and child daycares. Non-targeted industries would be everything else that doesn't fall under a targeted industry or a home-based business. And all of these grant categories, the businesses must be physically located within the city limits of Galt, and they must be providing goods and services within the city limits. And so that was one of the, that actually is overarching for all of the businesses. The home-based businesses must have a business license located within a residence of the city limits. In terms of the funding allocations, for home-based businesses, we've allocated, and I should preface that in evaluating these allocations for funding, we looked at the business license data. And so currently, we have roughly 550 businesses licensed in the city. 250 of those are home-based businesses, and then the remainder are retail businesses. Well, they're under the retail category, but they sort of, it's a catch-all for the business license database. So we've allocated $100,000 to the home-based businesses. They would receive a $500 flat grant per qualified business. So they would have to apply, provide us with some financial information, and then they would be eligible for $500. The non-targeted small businesses, so notwithstanding the targeted industries that I spoke of, they would be eligible for, and basically the non-targeted small business, the way that we've put this together is that the grant amount will be based on the 2019 annual gross revenue for each business. And so the gross revenue basically puts you into a category of what you can obtain a grant amount up to. And so, you know, for instance, if your gross revenue for 2019 puts you between 100,000 and $1 million, you would receive up to a $10,000 grant. The grant amount will be determined by comparing 2020 net revenue, which is the COVID year, to 2019 net revenue, which would be your, essentially kind of your base year. If the revenue loss is less than the allotted grant amount in the table, then the approved grant will be reduced to equal the verified net revenue loss. So no business is going to obtain a grant for more than they have, and they can show in revenue loss. The grantee cannot receive a grant with, which exceeds the verified revenue loss. And so this, you know, we, we prefer for the businesses to submit, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, but we're looking at their tax returns, filed tax returns for 2019 and 20. But we're flexible in terms of what, you know, we're, we're using a third-party consultant to evaluate all the financials. The businesses are not going to be submitting financial information directly to the city. And so the third-party financial consultant is going to be evaluating that to determine what the revenue loss is. And this could include COVID-related expenses. And so if they don't show a net revenue loss on their tax returns, but they can show us what kind of revenue, what kind of expenses they've incurred as a result of COVID, we would take that as proof of COVID expenses. For targeted small businesses, so those industries that fall into the categories I mentioned earlier, they would qualify for a larger grant amount based off of their 2019 gross annual revenue. So the same as the non-targeted, but just a higher grant amount. And so looking at the gross annual revenue, they fall under a category. The highest grant amount we have here is 25,000, and that would be versus the 15,000 that we have in the non-targeted. And so there's a bump for those businesses that we think probably experienced a little bit more of a revenue loss. Same determination, comparing tax revenue, net tax revenue, net revenue for the 2019 and 2020 years comparison. Eligibility requirements for businesses. The business must be in good standing with the city, possess a valid business license and current business license with the city, have a current certificate of occupancy where applicable for those brick and mortar businesses. They must be in compliance with all zoning and permit requirements where applicable. They must be current on all city bills and obligations, and then not subject to any liens or judgments by the city related to the business. So code enforcement or TOT deferral, anything of that nature. The business must have been operational as of March 1st, 2020, and still in operation. It must be compliant with all city, state and federal laws and regulations. The cap would be 3 million in gross annual revenue. So in 2019, businesses that earned over 3 million in gross annual revenue would not qualify for this program right now. As I mentioned, they must have a verifiable COVID-19-related net revenue or earnings loss when compared to 2020. The targeted business industries must have employed 40 full-time employees or less, and the non-targeted businesses must have employed 30 full-time employees or less as of March 1st, 2020. For the application process, we'll open the application for 30 days beginning on June 1st. Marketing of the program will include direct mailers to all of the licensed businesses. We'll do direct email announcements to the businesses that we have email addresses for social media posts. We're going to coordinate with the Galt Chamber and the Galt Herald for outreach efforts as well, to make sure that we can reach as many businesses as possible. The online applications will be submitted through our website. And we've actually talked to the Galt Chamber about those businesses that maybe would rather submit on paper, and so we'll coordinate with them as appropriate. The initial screening, I mean, this is a really basic kind of screening that we're going to be collecting in terms of the generic kind of business information. And then we will turn, once we qualify them that they have, they don't owe anything to the city, they have a valid business license or a home-based business license, we'll turn the application over to a third-party financial consultant to review the financial side of things, to verify what that revenue loss looks like and what grant they would qualify Once we do have the business qualified by the third-party consultant, that's when we'll issue the, the grant to the recipient. After 30 days, and so the idea would be that we would open this for 30 days, and talking to a lot of the businesses, or a lot of the different jurisdictions that have gone through this, they have modified their program numerous times. And so they would open it up and kind of see what the, the issues were with people qualifying, if there were problems with different businesses being able to submit information, or just had, you know, reservations about certain things. And they would go back and modify the program. And so the idea here would be, you know, if the funds are oversubscribed, we have roughly 1.2 million to provide to targeted and non-targeted businesses. If it is oversubscribed, we would use a random drawing to select grant recipients. If the funds are undersubscribed, again, we may open the application period back up or return to city council for modifications to the program if we see that there are things that are keeping businesses from qualifying. One of the things that we had talked about were businesses who maybe had opened in 2020 during the pandemic, and so they don't have a baseline year of 2019 for taxes for us to look at. So maybe coming back for modification to tweak that a little bit so that they would qualify. Obviously, they were significantly impacted opening during COVID. And so looking at maybe a 2020 versus 2021 tax return, or looking at what COVID-related expenses they've incurred. The, if the funds are remaining after conclusion of the program, you know, the idea would be that once we have gone through this, opened one or two or three rounds, made modifications to the program, if there is still funds remaining, I've had conversations with the city manager, and we would basically return to city council with whatever remaining funding there is to talk about options as to how else we can assist the businesses. Whether it be, you know, we had talked about Parklet programs or facade improvement grants that maybe we could issue to different businesses. There's things that we've discussed with the city attorney, and so we will dive in on that once we know how much funding is available, if there is funding. And then we'll come back to city council with those options to see how council would like to utilize the rest of the funding that's available. There are some key considerations to keep in mind here. This is an initial rollout of this program. We had to start somewhere. And so we looked at several different jurisdictions and tried to put together a program that we thought was a good fit to start with here in Galt. We will be flexible. If you read through the business assistance program, there's a lot of flexibility for the city manager and for the program administrator, which would be me, to make some justifications for businesses, to ask for additional information to be able to try to qualify them. We do not know how many applications we will receive. This is a, you know, as I mentioned, we have 250 home-based businesses, we have roughly 200 non-targeted and 100 targeted businesses. That's a rough sort of estimate going through the business license data. Which of those businesses are going to apply? Who's comfortable applying? Who needs the funding? You know, we don't really know. And so, again, we'll go through this first round to try to determine what our next steps are going to be as we move through the program. There will be special circumstances that we haven't considered. There's questions that have been raised already, and so there's things we're going to have to kind of figure out as we go through it. I've gotten a lot of information from the City of Alt Grove Economic Development Representatives, so I have an idea of kind of how they've handled some of these special circumstances. And once the program is concluded, we will report back to council in terms of how many businesses we were able to qualify, what that number looks like, you know, what the average funding amount is, things along, you know, those lines. So I'm asking you to be patient. We'll see how this goes once we roll it out. It will be on the city website. We'll have all the information on a dedicated webpage. We'll have the applications actually submitted through the website, and, you know, we'll go from there. So, is there any questions?
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate the presentation. Just wanted to say I did, as we had, our president of the Chamber of Commerce was here earlier this evening and had to leave, he did speak on behalf of the chamber, and the chamber has received the presentation early on and reviewed it and shared it with the board, I believe. And they were satisfied with the program. And actually, the program was kind of, Amy worked hand-in-hand with the community as well to come up with the program, so wasn't, right, it wasn't just created in a box. I mean, you got input from them.
And worked with Bonnie, and I've talked to some of the business boards.
Okay.
It's just hard. I mean, some restaurants I've talked to had ban for years in 2020 because they, you know, Uber Eats and DoorDash and Takeout really boomed their business. And so, you know, it might be more of the COVID-related expenses that they, you know, may need the funding for.
Well, I'm happy to see the program finally rolled out because people have been asking, and it's a long time coming. Thank you for all your hard work on it. I know it took a while because you're only one person and you have, wear many hats. I would like to state for the public that is watching, saw this presentation, that I and other council members who are business owners on this dais do not, are not eligible for this program because of our positions. So whether or not our businesses were impacted by COVID, which I think that they were, I know we were, but unfortunately, we're not eligible. It's strict stipulation. So I just want to state that for public record, there is no conflict. There's no conflict of interest. This is not something that we can, we can do. So, is there any questions for Ms. Mendez?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, first of all, Ms. Mendez, thank you for your hard work. You know, we are advocating the ARPA money we're giving to the city, we're giving to the other department, but now the times come up, what we're asking really to the small business and the maybe nonprofit organization very soon. Same thing, I'm going to piggyback with what the farmer mayor said. I'm also not qualified, even the hospitality business is very much hurting on the COVID. What, I'm a council, I'm elected official, I'm happy, you know, whatever in the books, we have to follow that rule. So I'm, there is a couple question on that program. I know they are chamber, they agree on that, but I still want to make a couple question. One thing, on the eligibility side, I know, I think this is not a clear with the tax return, especially with like in, for example, home base, they're getting $500. I don't think so, nobody want give their tax return. We should be have like a very clear tax return or sign financial statement. And I know we said it's a third party, and we know working with, when these citizens can apply with the third party, they usually can, at first, they can say, you don't have a tax return, we're not going to accept. I like, want to make sure we're clear with the third party, is my opinion. Should we tax return or sign financial statement? The second my question on, we did the separate target business and non-target business. Can you might be a little bit explain what's the difference, why we did non-target and target business? Because target business almost getting the double money than the non-target business. And most of business here in town, they're between, is most hurting between 10 and 25 employees. That's kind of my observation, but you are the expert. Can you little bit explain to me?
I think.
Explain to the public.
You know, the idea behind the targeted businesses were those businesses who were physically, I mean, they had to shut down completely. So hospitality industry, obviously, nobody was traveling at that time, essentially outside of people who were traveling for essential work. Restaurants, dining rooms were closed. There were staffing shortages that were experienced across the board, you know, not just the targeted industries. But the, you know, personal services, hair salons were shut down completely, so were nail salons. And those are the businesses that we communicated to for the most part through the pandemic when it first started, trying to push out some of those resources that were available. And so we think that, at least in, you know, talking to the Chamber of Commerce, because I've had this discussion with them, also talking to other jurisdictions, that was, they felt like those businesses were entitled to more, at least the availability of funding, that a larger component of it. And so that was the reason that we had decided to go that route. And again, you know, as going through this, as we accept applications and try to, you know, determine, one of the things we found in talking to City of Elk Grove, City of Rancho Cordova, and to Citrus Heights is that the businesses who, they first had a 25% revenue reduction, that was the, that was their threshold. You had to have had 25% in revenue loss, and most of the businesses didn't meet that threshold. And so they went back and they dropped that completely. And so I think they had maybe a 10% or 15% application rate at the beginning. And so looking at who was applying and who was hit the hardest, they also actually dropped the $3 million threshold completely, and they've dropped the employee threshold. And so I think that there'll be modifications as we go through this, but that was really, you know, those were impacted the most by the COVID restrictions that were put in place. And so that was the justification behind it.
So that target business, they said they have to have 40 employees minimum?
No, 40 employees maximum.
Oh, 40.
Yeah. And 30 maximum for the non-targeted businesses.
All right, thank you. That's my question.
Ms. Mendez, he mentioned something about having to have the tax returns, but when you and I spoke earlier today, you mentioned some things that were actually pretty straightforward and simple, like, for example, and correct me if I'm wrong, if a business could just simply say they had to spend, you know, $2,000 in Plexiglas and hand sanitizers and masks for their staff, whatever, they could just simply come forward and say, here's the receipts for those things, and that would be sufficient to apply for reimbursement.
Yeah.
Right? So doesn't have to be that you're presenting, you know, your tax returns or your profit-loss statements or any of that stuff. There's other ways. So I would encourage anybody to not just read it at face value, but actually read the program and ask questions.
And the program does have that written in it, and that will be on the website. It has all of the details. You know, the third-party financial consultant is going to be the consultant that's going to be reviewing this to determine what that is. But really, I think Frank, our city attorney, can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the determination for ARPA really needs to be connected to the COVID-19 pandemic and expenses that are incurred or revenue loss that is as a result of the COVID-19 restrictions. And so that's really what we're trying to determine going through these financial documents. And one of the things I had mentioned earlier is that gross revenue is kind of where you are categorized in the table. However, we're looking at net revenue because we know that there were significant expenses incurred by the businesses, and so we want to make sure that those expenses that do show up on the tax return. But one of the, you know, caveats, we talked about special circumstances. I am on the board for our Little League, and we applied for a grant through the nonprofit program at the state. And our fiscal year starts on October 1st and ends in September. And so our tax return for 2019 shows a significant loss in revenue, but that's what they're looking at as a base. And so there's going to be these special circumstances we have to look at when we go through and try to evaluate this. There's a lot of flexibility built, you know, built into the program. And so that really is, you know, we're trying to get this funding out to the businesses. That's our ultimate goal. We don't, you know, and if there is money left over, we'll come back and try to determine what the best use of it is. But the idea really is to get it into the hands of the businesses.
Thank you. Does any of the council have any questions for Amy? If not, I'll go to public comment.
Yeah, I do, just real briefly. It's stated in there, if there's an over percentage of applications, we may, several businesses depending, just won't have the opportunity, even though they deserve equally with everybody else. But my understanding is that in, like in Elk Grove, they were far short of achieving that, because I'd hate to see just a few businesses get succotashed. You know, that's accurate, yes, my understanding.
Yes, they had significant malfunding left over after they went through one, two, and love, round three of their program. And so they still, when I spoke to them just recently, they were still with roughly $1 million left.
Okay. And then if someone applies, you're having somebody independent analyze their eligibility, and part of that is to put a barrier between the city, being also public knowledge, and the business. So there's some security in that we're not just exposing myself to the public and/or the city, correct?
Correct. The third-party consultant is going to be collecting the financial information, evaluating it, and basically giving us a determination on what the qualifying number is with regard to the program.
So the city won't be poking around in any of their numbers. That's very good. So, and then finally, I want to thank you for being an army of one. I know this has been probably a huge number cruncher for you, and you learned a lot about a one-time life event, so thank you very much for taking care of all of it, and I'm glad it's finally to this stage.
Thank you. And we will bring back the nonprofit program to the first meeting in June. You'll see that.
I was going to ask you that. Thank you.
Quick, thank you for the hard work and the cooperation with the chamber. It's good to see this money being dispersed responsibly and actually being dispersed to the places that were most affected by the government response to the COVID. And as kind of like Councilman Van den Berg was saying, that was, the only thing that jumped out at me was that, you know, if we have a oversub, oversubscription, that we may, I believe is how it was worded, go to a lottery type thing. But it looks like you have enough flexibility that if we did get in that position and, you know, maybe rather than two businesses getting nixed out, we could lower the amount and spread the wealth and get it to as many.
And the program that we can allocate funds, you know, as we see necessary when it comes down to it. So there is a lot of flexibility in there.
Yeah, that was the only thing that jumped out at me, so that's great. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a public comment on this topic?
Two things. First of all, if I'm incorrect, I'll have the young lady correct me. We're dealing with small business. Small business may not have large amounts of losses as compared to maybe a larger outfit. I think that $3 million figure is way out of line. That's number one. Number two, as far as going to a third party, who's paying for that and who is the third party is very important. Will it be chosen by the city? Will it be that they go to an outside party on their own? That's another thing. That's my two problems with the program. Thank you.
And to answer Ms. Johnson's question for the public, is it's actually 1.3 million is what we've designated, and any business from small up can apply. There's a cap, so a business could apply for anything within that scope of the cap from zero to, or not from zero, they wouldn't apply for zero, but, so a small business, say that somebody runs a daycare out of their home, and they just have one employee, like this lady, she's a daycare, you know, and she didn't have any kids coming because COVID. She would qualify under this program, and she could apply for whatever those losses were, based on whatever financial information she could provide, tax returns, profit-loss statements. Maybe, maybe it was just a bunch of stuff she had to buy because of COVID to make her daycare more safer, and then she spent, you know, $5,000 to $10,000. That would be money she could apply for, so. And then the firm is actually determined by the city. It's a third-party firm. And the reason we did that is because for businesses to hand over their financial information to the city would then become public record, and this is private information, more or less, some of it could be. And it just adds a buffer between the businesses and the city, so the city doesn't know people's private businesses, you know, numbers. So this firm will look at those numbers and determine whether or not, and then they're not going to probably get into the weeds like an accountant would, they're just going to, you know, look and see if this person's going to be eligible, it's legitimate, and then they'll let the city know this person's eligible, and they'll look through them. So that's how it'll work. And we modeled this after Elk Grove, so we feel like it's going to work. So, any additional public comment?
Chris Brosman.
Mr. Brosman.
I may have missed it, but I assume that they still have to have a current business license to do business this year. And I think I'm probably jumping the, you know, I did see nonprofits previously, there was a grant money available, but to be honest with you, at $5,000, it doesn't, I'm a member of the Galt Grange. We make our revenue through hall rental. We were shut down for two and a half years, basically. We lost $40,000 each year. I kept the people on payroll all the way through it, till the last six months, and then I had to pull that plug. Is there a future program is kind of what I was hearing coming out towards that, but I mean, at $5,000, to be frank with you, it's not going to make a difference on the Galt Grange surviving or not surviving, but I'll tell you, my bank account right now on the Galt Grange is pretty slim.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Close that.
Yeah, Mr. Brosman, so to answer your question, it's $150,000, jump in Amy if I'm wrong, $150,000 is what we've designated to go to nonprofits, right? And that program's going to be rolled out and being next month. And, and that program will basically be, for example, you, the Grange is a good example. So the Grange basically could provide and say, well, we were not able to operate for six months. And then based on prior, you know, you could show evidence of this is what we normally would make during a year, or this is what we normally make per month, some kind of something that would show that, and that's what.
Hit new taxes every year.
Yeah, so, so you would, that's, it's just as simple as that. So, or let's say that, you know, the Lions Club does a crab feed every year, and they weren't able to do that because of the COVID, because of COVID. All they would need to do is show evidence of what they made from a prior event, you know, through financials, through receipt, whatever, that's the concept of it. And then they could be reimbursed. I don't know, what's the cap, is there a cap per business, Amy?
For the nonprofit?
Yeah.
I don't have it with me. I have it in my computer. I haven't looked at it, but.
Approximately?
I think it's just dependent on, I have to look at it.
Okay.
I was trying to calculate the number of nonprofits that we have, and I mentioned that I yet to put a complete list together. So that's kind of what is trying, before I determine what that max amount is going to be. I want to make sure we know how many, as the Galt Grange, I wasn't even aware of. That's not on.
Yeah, because the guy idea would be if the 150 is not distributed out, then we'd come back and say, okay, can we let these people reapply for more? Because maybe, we're just trying to gauge what's fair for everybody. We don't want a bunch left over, but we also don't want, you know, five nonprofits to max out the program and nobody, and everybody gets their fair shares. That's why it's better to start with caps and let everybody apply, and then if there's money left over, go round two or something. So definitely reach out to Amy, Mr. Brosman, when that gets deployed in the first, first part of June, and make sure the Grange tries to take advantage of that. Any other public comment?
Bonnie Rodriguez.
I know Kevin already spoke, but I wanted to reiterate, since there have been public comments and questions, and I want to assure the public that the chamber did really work hand-in-hand with, with Amy, and we have many of the same questions that were brought up today, so, and we were confident in the answers that we received. We really do feel like the city has done their due diligence on this. Like Mr. Brosman brought up, there are many businesses, as well as nonprofits and other organizations out there that lost far more than that $25,000 cap. But like the mayor said, if you try to actually completely reimburse a business or a nonprofit from what they actually lost, you could possibly just be funding one. And so that's why we felt like what the city is proposed, what staff has proposed, is fair. I myself work in a business and now own that business that lost well over what the $1.3 million. So, you know, obviously, I, we're not alone in it. And yes, larger businesses have the potential of losing more, but they also have the potential of having a little bit more of a cushion. And that's why we felt that targeting the small businesses was a little bit more fair. We have less availability to funding as bigger businesses do. We have less, less resources to get, to go to. And so I think that that's part of the reason why we went toward this. I think that's not just the city, many other, the county did the same thing, targeted the small businesses, and at the state, and even up to the federal. So because they recognize that small businesses really, as a whole, you bring them together, they're going to completely annihilate your large businesses individually, because there's a lot on the backs of the small businesses. So we do really appreciate all that Amy's hard work in this. And just on a side note, I also am a member of the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce. I had really in-depth conversations with them, with their director, and our program is a little bit, I would say, better than what they had, and they're extremely happy up there with the way that their business, their plan was rolled out and how it went. I think I had this conversation, sort of, with Councilman Van den Berg. There's going to be businesses out there that are not going to apply. They're just not going to do it. You can't, and as I told him, you can lead the horse to water, but they might not drink. I don't think, and history has shown in these other entities, you're not, you're not going to get rid of that many this first round. It's just not going to happen. Businesses are not going to trust it. They're going to hear it once and then forget about it, put it off to the side, they're going to forget, and then they're going to come back and complain and say they never heard about it. That's just the nature of people. We all do that. In the talks within the chamber, we feel like businesses need to be responsible. So as it would be nice to be able to take the, what was it, 500 business licenses that we have and say, oh, here, every business, here's your money. That sounds great and everything, but those businesses who are really want it, they're going to work for it, and they kind of earn it. So if a business sits back and doesn't take this opportunity, you know, and you give them two or three chances, if there's only five of them that are left out, it's going to be on their heads. It really is. I, I, just by going, what has happened before in the other entities, I had a difficult time getting rid of their money because the businesses weren't applying. So reward the businesses that are going to be on top of this. The chamber is here to help them, are. chamber is here to help them. Our program director has, she's already looked at what other entities were asking for the information. She's ready to help whoever needs it, whether they're chamber members or not. We're ready to help implement this, to spread it out there. But we can put the information out there in front of all these businesses and give them all the confidence in the world. But unless they act on it, we can't do anything about that. So again, I just wanted to thank the city and Amy for everything they've done. Really, we are behind this and we're ready to help. And we're excited, June 1st, yay, right.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any further public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, if we don't have any further questions from the council for Ms. Mendez on this subject, then we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution establishing the City of Galt's COVID-19 Small Business Assistance and Recovery Grant Program and appropriate $1,303,925 of American Rescue Plan Act revenues to fund this program.
So moved.
Seconded, moved by Councilman Vandenberg and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Approved 4-0. Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Moving on to our next item from the Public Works Department. Item is going to be number five. Subject is the Water and Wastewater Rate Cost of Service and Rate Study Workshop. Mr. Selling.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So with me tonight is Mr. Habib Isaac of IB Consulting. And you will likely recall back in December, we did kind of a rates 101 workshop kind of informational presentation, basically which provided an overview of the process involved in developing water and wastewater rates. If this is, that'll help. For tonight's presentation, he will be presenting you the information and findings relative to the cost of service rate study for the city's water and wastewater services. Tonight's item is informational, though we do seek the council's direction on next steps in scheduling the public hearings for consideration of the proposed new rates. Before I introduce Mr. Isaac, though, I wanted to note that we kind of had a bit of an afterthought, and we've added a couple of slides, and I think the clerk has distributed them to you all. And we'll note them as they come up in the presentation. It's essentially some contextual information on some other key cities in the area that we thought would be helpful. So with that, I will introduce Mr. Isaac, who will take you through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, Councilmember Habib Isaac with IB Consulting. And last time I was here, we went through our weights 101. And this time, we're coming back to show you our findings and the cost of service analysis and the proposed rates. Go ahead, next slide. So part of the main goals of our objectives with updating the rates and the additional utilities is first, developing and updating the long-term financial plan for water and wastewater. We count for all the new capital projects based on the capital improvement plan for both enterprises. We update the wastewater SRF rates. You have two rate components for the wastewater related to SRF 1 and SRF 2. But you also have more connections and more development that occurred. So it's recalibrating those rates because the debt service doesn't change. So that brings those rates, for those rates for those components come down. We have to make sure that we ensure with Prop 218 compliance with the rates, which is the governing statutes for these utility rates. And then also work through these type of presentations. And then we'll also be drafting a full administrative report that substantiates the analysis that we went through. Go ahead. So I'm going to let the cat out of the bag right away. And this is showing what is your current customer, your typical customer, single-family home using 20 units of water, what their existing bill is with water and wastewater. On the left-hand side is existing bill showing water broken out between the fixed charge and the variable rate. And then wastewater is completely fixed on the wastewater side. And then the proposed rate shows that in total is going up from almost 119 to 126. Go ahead and click the next one. So then differences between the two is water is going up by $2.58, sewer is going up by $4.34. So in terms of relative increases, especially with inflation, that's around a 5.8% increase, even though inflation's been pretty high in the last, this part of the year. Go ahead. So we're going to go through the water enterprise and how essentially did we get to that increase? So a couple of things that we want to make sure that we see when we first look at your current financial position, we look at what are your current rates generating today. And we don't just go off your budget number. We actually take the raw billing data and the usage of the last fiscal year, and then we recalculate your revenue and compare it to your budget number. So what that does is that if we do any type of changes or scenarios of where we see a drop in water demand, we know we have the right units of service because we tie to your last year's actuals. So when we look at your financial metrics, we want to make sure that we have positive net income over your operating every year. We want to make sure we meet your debt covenants, sufficiently fund your full capital plan, and then maintain healthy reserves. Go ahead. So this first slide chart shows your operating position. This is before capital. This is just your operating expenses. The black trend line going across is your existing rates, which is flat because you have no more revenue adjustments scheduled that have been previously adopted. The red trend line going across is your operating expenses with inflationary adjustments identified for energy, salaries, benefits, PERS, and that's slowly ticking up. The bars on the bottom, that is your net income. So essentially, it's the bandwidth between your revenues and your expenses. So when your revenues are above your expenses, then you have positive net income. And then when it crosses over, now you see you have an operating deficit, which is not, that's very common because the way the Prop 218 is set up, you can only go out for rates every five years. So almost built in that you have to go through this analysis and this process every five years at a minimum. So with the fact that you can't just increase rates in perpetuity, say, just set it to CPI, then you're always going to see that you have to update rates accordingly. Go ahead. Then that was just operating. Then we also have to make sure we fund your capital improvement plan. And this shows your capital schedule for water for '23 through '27. So averages just around $1 million plus every year. Go ahead. And then after we fund your operating, after we fully fund your capital, we then look at how is your reserves looking. And we anticipated that last time we did your study too, is that we were going to build up reserves because we are going to see some big capital projects coming online. That's why you see that fund balance in '23 fairly high, but then you see it ratcheting down. But what we don't want to occur is that we don't want it to go below your minimum requirements. And those minimum is to have 90 days of operating, make sure you have a full year of capital revenue in your coffers. So you don't have to hold off on your capital plan that's occurring in that fiscal year. So we want to make sure that it's within that bandwidth of your minimum and your target. So what we want to do is pretty much rectify those '26 and '27 to make sure that it goes back up above. Remember, this is looking at your financial outlook at existing rates. So no revenue adjustment. Go ahead. And then keep in mind, water has not increased rates for over two years. You know, part of that was just last time we did a study, what it went out to, and also COVID. So we haven't, your city hasn't seen any adjustment, even though costs have increased over time, over the last two years, have been no rate increase in two years. Go ahead. And then this just shows the shortfall that we're going to resolve. So the results of this is annual net income is decreasing, which is also showing as a deficit in 2026 or by 2026. We're going to fully fund your capital improvement plan, which is one of the primary drivers, because that is what is reducing your reserves. Because we're showing that without additional revenue, your reserves are going to be used to fund that capital plan. The average annual CIP is 1.35 million. And then at existing rates, reserves would be used to cover that capital spending. Obviously, that's not sustainable long-term. We want to make sure that we meet your reserve requirements in 2026. And without increasing rates, you will be fully depleted by 2028 in terms of reserve balance. Next slide. So we look at proposed financial plan. Go ahead. We still have the financial metrics on the left. And now we're showing what it looks like now. Go ahead and go next. So now with the proposed financial plan, we're going to make sure your revenues are above your expenses every single year. So you are generating positive net income. And then that positive net income could go towards your capital spending and go towards your reserves. But it's going to be a combination of both. Net income coming in on annual basis, but you're still going to be reusing reserves because we did build that up over the years. Go ahead. And we're meeting all those checks. We can go through those. We're just checking off those. And then with reserves, this is now where we fall. We're still bringing those reserves down, but we're making sure we maintain healthy reserves as we look out. Next one. Keep going. And one more. And then to achieve this, we need 8% revenue adjustments. But notice I mentioned that the bill impact was around 5.8%, 5.8% increase. So the amount of revenue you need for the utility as a whole, that's just total revenue. But then what that means in terms of impact on bills could be different. The only way this, it's one-to-one is if like it was gasoline where you just charge 100% variable, then, but you don't. There's a portion of your revenue comes from a fixed charge, and that varies by meter size. A portion of your revenue comes from variable, and that varies by how much each person uses. So the way the revenue comes in doesn't correlate directly to the revenue adjustment you need for the utility as a whole. Go ahead, next slide. So in terms of rate design, one thing we are recommending is that we change the rates because now all your customers are metered. Five years ago, all your customers were not metered. You still had non-metered. But now that you have everyone fully metered, we recommend adjusting the rates to a two-tiered rate structure. Tier one would be nine units of water, and that reflects your winter average use of your customers. So basically, the low time, you know, no peak where you see an increase in water usage because of outdoor needs during the summer. And then anything over nine units would be charged the tier-two rate. The other thing we're doing is just recalibrating the cost of service. So because water usage trends have changed, the amount of water usage, residential versus commercial versus irrigation, that all has changed over since the five years. You also have more accounts. So we're just going to recalibrate the cost sharing between those customers based on the new usage trends. And then fixed variable split, that's how much revenue, of your total revenue needs, how much comes from your bimonthly fixed charges versus your variable rates. You've been averaging around 52% of the recovery comes from your fixed charge. So we want to maintain that same percentage so you have stable revenue continuing to come in. So you do pay your debt service. You do move forward your capital plan without waiting or stalling for revenues to come in. Go ahead. So this shows the revenue requirements for the water enterprise for 2023. I just highlighting some of the major points. Go ahead and next. O-N-M cost is 3.8 million. Next one. You have some other revenue offsets. That is 94,000. So that reduces the expenses. Next one. Then you have your CIP and reserve funding, which is 660,000. So in total, next one, your need from rates, $4.4 million. One thing to point out, too, is that those revenue adjustments I showed you, we're looking at that being implemented every January. So even though it shows 8%, that's if it occurs over a full year. Because we're recommending every January, then you're really going to see that really be a 4% revenue that actually comes in, in that year, because we want to do it during the low period of the, you know, the low season. So then customers could get used to the rate change while they're using the lowest amount of water. So they get used to it before they then use more water in the summer. We don't want to show like a high use in the summer and then a rate increase during that same time period. So it gives customers a little bit of breathing room for that. So in terms of the cost of service, the cost components that we identified for this agency, go ahead, is your fixed costs are your account services and meter capacity. And we identify the dollar amounts associated with that. So account services, think of that as like customer service, billing. It doesn't matter how much water you use. Doesn't matter the size of your meter. If you have an account, that's the base charge that everyone gets charged. So it's 550,000 gets allocated to that for all customers. Meter capacity, that's where it's more like capital costs, your field workers. That's where the size of the meter does matter. So those that have a bigger sized meter put more demand on the system. So then they will get a little bit more of that cost. Next one. And then on the variable side, we have your delivery. And then we have peaking. And the way that peaking plays a factor is how different customer classes use water differently. So then they get charged a little bit based on how much they peak on the system. And then that's also going to be how we show different rates between tier one and tier two. Tier one customers, those are customers that stay under the nine units, whereas two customers use water above that, and then they show a peak on the system. So then they get a little bit more cost allocated to them. Go ahead. So these are your fixed components. And then those dollar amounts end up being around 51.4%. So we're right around where you were before. Next one. And then the variable side recovers the rest. Next slide. So then these are your fixed charges. So what we're showing here is the meter sizes, the AWDA capacity ratios. What that is, is based on the amount of flow that could go through each sized meter. That gives the differential of when bigger sized meters should pay more are the basis for that. The next one just shows you a number of accounts. The first dollar amount is their account services. That's where I said the size of the meter or the amount of water is, doesn't play a factor. So that 500,000 broken out to every single account of every single bill ends up being $6.10. And then the meter capacity, that's where the size of the meter does, does play a factor. And it goes off of those capacity ratios. So your base meter size is one inch. A one-half inch meter uses twice as much water could flow through that versus a one-inch meter. So then that 1616 doubles for them. And that continues on for each sized meter. And then the sum of the two is your proposed fixed charges. And then we can show you the existing charge to show you the difference. So go ahead and hit that next slide. Majority of your customers are in that one inch or less. You'll see that 7,200 of your, of all your customers are in that category. So they'll see essentially a dollar increase in their, in their, we're showing monthly here, of their monthly bill.
Mr. Isaac, sorry.
Yes.
I forget. How come you have twice as much water going through a one-and-a-half inch as a one?
That's the amount of flow that's, that the capacity they bought in the system, the amount of gallons per minute that could go through a one-inch, a one-and-a-half inch is 100 versus a one-inch is 50. So because of that amount of capacity they bought in the system, then they also are receiving that same type of allocation on the operating, on the operating side.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, next slide. And then we show the variable rates. We show the same process. We show residential tier one, tier two. Delivery is kind of similar to the account services. Every unit of water pays for the delivery cost. So that's the same across the board. And then the peaking cost, that's where the way customers use water and the way they peak in the summer versus their average use over the course of the year plays a factor. And then it's similar, it plays a factor in tier one, tier two. You sum those two, you come up with your proposed rates for 2023. We compare it to your existing rates, and we show the difference. So please note, in tier one, we actually show a reduction. So one thing with us having it fully metered, we now have the ability to show, provide the tiers to give some affordability to those customers that try to be super efficient, or there are fixed incomes that should be efficient with their water use so they can control their bill. Next one. So essentially, what this does is that first unit, you know, I mentioned tier one's up to nine units. So let's just round to 10 units. So at 10 units, that's 90 cents. Their meter charge went up by a dollar. So it's almost a wash. So then even though we're doing an 8% revenue adjustment, those customers that stay efficient, stay under nine units, they're essentially not going to see a change in their bill. It's going to be a difference of like a few cents, less than 10 cents. Okay, so that's one advantage of having tiered rates. Next slide. And then this shows you the five-year schedule. Now taking '23, which I just broke it down for you. And then from '24, '27, we assume the cost of service is staying constant. So then now it is just an 8% adjustment every year. So that's, that is now when they tie. And then the variable rate, same thing, '24 through '27, 8% increases each year. Now, that's your ceiling. One thing that you, when we go through Prop 218, you're going to have to send out notices to our- Now that's your ceiling. One thing that you, when we go through Prop 18, you're going to have to send out notices to all your customers identifying these rates and basically saying that the city cannot exceed these rates unless you go through this process again, come up with a report again, and then send out notices again. It's very common for agencies to even be able to go below that. We've done annual updates for you during the last five years and in instances we look at, can you do less than what was noticed? And that's one thing, it's almost like a report card, if you will, if we then update it on an annual basis. And we do that for a fraction of the cost. But that's something we can look at on an annual basis if, if, if you want some additional layers of review. Next slide. And then this is the additional slides that we indicated wasn't part of the original agenda, but we felt was important to include. So now we're showing a comparison to local agencies. This is a three quarter inch meter using twenty units of water. We show your current rate, the proposed is in dark purple. And then the other agencies, which is City of Lodi, Sacramento County Water Agency, City of Oakdale, which is probably the closest one to you in terms of comparability. City of Stockton and City Elk Grove. City Elk Grove is the, it's, it's really Elk Grove Water District that we're showing here. And then I stopped there for any questions about water and otherwise I could go to wastewater.
No, my questions are actually about both. So I'll wait for your wastewater.
Okay. Any other council members? Okay, seeing that, I'll continue to move forward. So we take that same approach with wastewater. We first look at your existing revenues and how it's performing. Go ahead. Here's your operating, this one, you actually are staying positive for a longer period of time and you just have a very slight deficit when you get to two thousand and twenty seven. But wastewater did have one more adjustment just this last year compared to water was no adjustments for two years. Go ahead. Your capital plan is, is pretty extensive in two thousand and twenty three, two point six million, then dips down. And then you have one point eights in twenty six and twenty seven. Go ahead. And then for your reserves, you're fairly, fairly just slightly above your minimum. And then because of those capital improvements that are occurring, that's what's causing that to dip. So again, we're just going to resolve that reductions in those later years. Go ahead. And then that's the shortfall. So with this, the, the annual income is decreasing with a deficit by two thousand and twenty seven. Similar water is the system reinvestment that we're going to generate, we need more revenue for and to maintain healthy reserves. The average CIP is one point six million. We can't continue to fund that with existing rates. And reserves will not meet its minimum requirement in two thousand and twenty five. Next slide. So looking at our proposed financial plan, go ahead. We then have revenues above expenses for all years. And then we have positive net income that could go towards capital spending and your reserve funds. Next slide. You go and go through those checks. And then now we're hovering right over that minimum. We're in between the minimum and the target amount. So we're in that bandwidth. Next slide. Keep going. And then with these, with this, we need adjustments of nine percent for the first two years. Then we can write it down to several percents for the next three years. Next slide. And then here's the revenue just, uh, the revenue requirements for two thousand and twenty three. Go ahead. We have eight point two million in O N M and keep in mind, two point six million of that is just your S R F loans for the treatment plant expansions and improvements. Revenue offsets, a hundred thirty five thousand, that brings some of that cost down. And then we have the reserve funding, the capitals, and that's one point five million. So the total amount that needs to come from rates is nine point six million dollars. And keep in mind again, because this is also January, even though we're showing a nine percent, what you're actually realizing in that, in that fiscal year is four and a half percent of revenue coming in. Because we're, it's coming in every, we're not having those rates go and affect July. We did do it July first, then you'll see a full eight percent revenue increase. But because of doing it in January, that, that nine percent, sorry, I said eight, that nine percent is really four and a half being realized in this fiscal year. And then for the cost of service components, go ahead. We have the account services, which is similar to water and we have the flow amount. Next one. And then we have the treatment cost for the wastewater flows, bio oxygen man and total spend in solids. Next one, you're self sufficient enterprise where you do everything in-house. Other agencies, they have more of a regional contributions to go to a regional facility. But that's why I was mentioning you're kind of more like Lodi, where Lodi also is fully self sufficient. They have their own treatment plant. And then there's the S R F loans of one point one million and one point five million. Go ahead. So with the rate design, we're keeping it the way it is now. We did a restructuring last time of commercial adjusting from a bunch of different classifications to low, medium and high. It also helps the, the city with new development coming in where they may not meet the mold of those twelve or thirteen customer classes. Like what if you have a brewery coming in and it's not listed? Now the city could review that, that development plan and then identify to them where they fall other, between the, the amount of strength loading that they're going to generate to the treatment plant and they could assign them to low, medium or high. Go ahead. And then for the account services component, this is basically kind of like the fixed account charge that everyone gets billed every single month. That thirty six thirty, we're showing this on a monthly basis, also mainly for the comparison. But we do realize that you bill on a bi monthly basis. And then that dollar amount of three point six million, if we show that allocated to the different customer classes, then we still come up with three point six showing how that gets allocated to each customer. Go ahead. And then for the flow, that is allocated based on the amount of flow that is generated by each customer class to the treatment plant. And then for the bio oxygen man and total spend in solids, we take that flow and then we weight it based on the strength concentrations of that, of the B O D and of the T S S to have, to make sure we allocate that equity between the customer classes. And then that's the percentages to allocate to each one. Next one. And then the S R F loans, you know, typically we will look at debt and say, this is a fixed charge. So we should, we should kind of spread it similar to account services. But the last time when we're looking at that, that wouldn't be a fair allocation because when we look at total accounts, commercial is a fraction of it. It's very small, like less than ten percent. But then when we look at flow contributed to the treatment plant, commercial is more fifteen to twenty percent. So it made more sense to give them their fair share allocation of costs to allocate it based on flow as opposed to number of accounts. And we're keeping that same approach. And then just to keep in mind, just want to show you when these two loans retire. The first S R F loan retires in two thousand and thirty two and then S R F two retires in two thousand and thirty eight. Looking at residential, we take all these components and then we end up making it a fat, a flat fixed charge. So on a monthly basis, the charge is eighty two dollars and sixty two cents. Go ahead. And then keep in mind, the S R F loans, because you have more accounts and units to spread that cost over, those, those two charges combined, those rate components are coming down by four dollars and sixty three cents. However, because of the nine percent revenue adjustment that we need, go ahead, next one. The total increase is going up by four dollars. So if, if those, if we didn't have any new accounts to spread that S R F loans over, then it would really be a nine percent, a nine dollar increase, but the net difference is four dollars. And then for non residential, we take those variable components, the flow, the B O D and T S S, the S R F and S, S R F two, and then we take that as a variable rate. Go ahead. And then those variable rates show the unit rates for each one of those components. And then shows the full load amount. When you take the sum of those unit rates and combine them, then you get the six ninety seven, eight sixty two and ten seventy six. Next slide. And then we show it compared to existing. You'll see that each of them are going up by twenty cents up to seventy cents. So each one of those are less than a dollar increase. And then this shows the five years of proposed rates. This is what would show up in the notice to your customers. And then in terms of comparison to other agencies, you are definitely on the high side. You were in your current, you are in your proposed. But keep in mind, like, for example, Elk Grove, they, that's two regional agencies of Sacramento County that they're contributing to that spread over more agencies than just the city. Lodi has their own, I'm sorry, not Lodi. Oakdale has their own utilities, self-serving. So you're more comparable to them. If you didn't have those expansions, those S R F loans, that's around twenty one, twenty two dollars coming off of your, off of your monthly bill, which then means you're right in line with Oakdale. Very, very similar. You'd be around sixty two dollars. And then also Oakdale hasn't increased their rates since two thousand and seventeen. So I would expect that they're probably in a rate study right now, or they're going to be very soon. Simply for just inflation and, and expenses going up, I would imagine that their, uh, race day should be commissioned pretty soon here. And then again, I just want to show that comparison one more time. Go ahead and click one more time and that difference. So even with the, this is all inclusive with the revenue adjustments of two thousand and twenty three of eight percent for water and nine percent for wastewater, even with those increases, the impact to your typical customer is two dollars fifty eight cents for water and four thirty four for sewer. Collectively combined, it's five point eight percent increase, even though the revenue adjustments are more than that. So with that, I could open up to any questions you may have for wastewater as well as we can go back to water.
Thank you, Mr. Isaac. I'll start it off here. Um, so I was just doing some, so the, the twenty one dollars and twenty eight cents is the two S R Fs combined. Is that per month? Was that by, is that per bill? Cause we're, we're every other month, right?
Everything we're showing is monthly because you even show your rates monthly, but you do bill bi monthly.
So what, I don't know, you probably don't have these figures exactly, but Mike can maybe help out. Just ballpark, like how much were those S R F loans? How much was each one?
Yeah, I, unfortunately I don't have that off the top of my head, but I know they're thirty years and so they're going to be about thirty two million each, right around thirty two.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm doing some math and seventy seven hundred accounts is what I got off one of your slides that may be wrong. But if you had seventy seven hundred residential accounts at twenty one dollars and twenty eight cents per month paying the S R F fees, that's like, that's like almost two million dollars a year.
Yeah, that, those are the accounts that we're showing. Yes, that, that is correct.
So two million dollars a year.
About two point five million and for both combined.
So.
Is the debt service.
Okay. So two, so if, if it's a thirty year loan, then that means we're, that the citizens are paying sixty million when it's all said and done.
It's also done with interest and everything. Yes.
That's crazy. Sixty, really? Sixty million dollars? Wow. That's ass.
And it's a S R F loan where the interest rate is, I think, like, I, I could be wrong, but around two percent. So you're definitely getting them.
Um, okay. So is, moving on to a different question. So is, is, um, so to, for clarification to the public too, so our water meters, so is it metering the water? Is it metering fresh water in and wastewater out? Or is it just metering one way and the other is calculated based on that inbound?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, you only have your water side metered. Most agencies don't have wastewater flows metered.
Okay.
Um, you do have a couple of commercial customers, big commercial customers that do have their flows metered. But most, that's only like a handful, but most customers, all customers really just don't have their flow side metered.
So this eighty two dollars and sixty two cents, the proposed wastewater rate is, that's a fixed rate or is that just based? Cause it, that's not based on a certain, like the first one, the first slide, it says it's based on a three quarter inch meter using twenty C C F F or C C F. But the, the wastewater, that's a fixed cost.
That's a flat charge, but we are assuming fifty five gallons per capita per day for residential based on state water efficiency standards that amount they should be using for indoor use.
Because I think where I've, because I've had some citizens come to me and they feel like it's unfair because they're like, you know, it's like a single guy, senior citizen. He's like, I barely used, I don't hardly use much water. And so if his rate's low, then, then obviously, you know, that, the, because we're not metering the outbound. So if somebody, if somebody is using a very minimal inbound, so would it be, um, that's still, that's still eighty two dollars? Is that still going to be there? Or is that still, is it still contingent on the inbound? That number never fluctuates.
That number never fluctuates because with, with residential, single family, you typically don't see much variance in wastewater flows. For your typical single family home is pretty consistent throughout the year. Whereas water can be very different because of outdoor watering for, for your irrigation needs.
Right. But I'm talking about like, if, if I have, you know, my wife and three daughters and we live in a house and we're paying eighty two sixty two. And then you have like my father who lived alone and he traveled a lot. So he wasn't even home that much. I mean, how is, how, how is that fair for him to be paying eighty two dollars?
So it also depends on the data that we have available. You could look at, well, one, metering the, the, the flow side would be extremely expensive and very unusual for a city to undertake. But other agencies do have budget based rates for water. And when they have budget based rates for water, their indoor water use is based on the people per household that live there. Where they actually compile that data for every single customer. And then with those agencies that also provide sewer, they then tie their sewer charges to the number of people that have been identified on their, on the water side for their indoor budgets. So you could compile that data as well. And we could use the number of people per household to then say, one person at fifty five gallons per capita per day would be charged less than a household of four. However, that data is not available. So that's something you would have to strive for to compile. And if you're going to do that type of analysis or you want to do that, then I would recommend you also just move towards budget based rates on the water side.
Because the decision was made years back to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, my, my memory is a little fuzzy, but it was like, I remember talking to our ex mayor about this a couple of years ago before she moved. And it was like, there was a decision about making more of it fixed and less of it based on the meter numbers or making less, you know, there was, there was a choice to be made on how it was set up.
I wouldn't recommend making wastewater based on, on meter size.
No, I'm, I think it was just a water discussion, not wastewater. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Repeat your question.
Uh, I think it was decided, the methodology for the billing at one point where it was like, somebody said to me, well, they decided to do it where it was a lower fixed cost and more of it was pursuit. More of it was a fixed cost because we were insured to cover our expenses and less of it was based on usage. And in retrospect, they're saying that they should wish they would have done it different. I wish I could remember. I don't remember if anybody remembers that, but, but this is probably, you know, a few years, several years ago at least. And anyways, I guess it doesn't, it's irrelevant, but I just, it's just crazy. Like a hundred and sixty dollars a month is just wastewater for people's bills in, in GALT. And I know obviously twenty dollars of that is twenty two is the S R F, but that's just like a staggering number like.
Or, I'm sorry, a hundred sixty bi monthly?
I'm sorry. Yeah. Right. So when somebody gets their GALT, city GALT bill, it's a hundred sixty dollars for just, you know, the wastewater. And then there's water on top of that. So it's like, you know, bills for like, you know, they're expensive. Like people, you know, fixed, fixed income people especially, I hear from them a lot about the water bills and stuff. Although I do have to say, looking, I, I did some quick math here and combined the rates. I looked at all your, what your water and then I looked at the wastewater and I saw that like, for example, City of Elk Grove pays a hundred dollars for, for water. Whereas I was one of the lowest, but then you flip to the wastewater and they're one of the lowest. But if you, if you put them all together out of the five jurisdictions, if you combine the two costs, we're actually three out of five at a hundred and twenty five dollars with the two combined per month. Whereas Elk Grove is the highest stock, the second highest, we're third. So I mean, and Oakdale is just right behind us. So I mean, combined, it's just that we're like way up there on the wastewater, but we are low on the water. So I guess that does help offset it.
And we also, now we're tearing water. So then that provides some affordability for those that are super efficient and stay at nine units or less. As I mentioned, their bill doesn't even change, even though we're, we're, that includes that eight percent revenue adjustments on, on the water side.
Because your rate, because your, your graph is based on the twenty C C F, C C F. So if somebody is, is actually really, really efficient and they go under that, then, then they're not going to, they're actually not even going to be paying the forty three twenty seven.
Right. They're essentially going to be revenue neutral on the water side. I think the difference is like three cents.
Okay. One last thing, although it's weird. So I, I had a much larger house a couple of years ago. We just downsized and our water bill is. We just downsized, and, uh, our water bill is actually way more, way more at the house we're at, which is actually one-third the size of the house. Our, and, and thinking back, my, our other house, our water bill was the same every single month, down to the penny. So it's like either our meter was broken and something was wrong. We were getting a deal all the time, I don't know. But, uh, yeah, it was just really strange, because we're paying way more now. And I don't, and we have less kids living at home. It's just weird. I don't know. Anyways, that's all the questions I have. Thank you for clarifying all that stuff. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Isaacs or Mr. Selling?
You did a great job covering everything I was concerned about. Appreciate it.
I had one question. This came up in relation to, we were talking about, uh, the ordinance regarding whether it's the city or the homeowner's responsibility to fix sewer pipes in the roadway. And I believe we were waiting for this study so that we could make an informed decision as to how much that would increase our wastewater rates.
Yeah, I don't think that we built in the lateral repairs into the sewer rate yet, but that is something that we'll do as far as the final report. And we'll be able to give you a cost differential on that. I think, we'll have to make some assumptions as far as approximately how many we do a year, kind of thing, in an average cost. But I think it's going to be a relatively minimal amount of money, kind of thing. So, but we will definitely identify that. So I haven't forgot that either, Councilwoman, thank you. And one thing I would say too, that I think along some of the questions the mayor asked, and, and what Habib highlighted is, you know, at least in my, well, a little over three years here, I've heard a few times from folks is, you know, a, a fixed income, or, you know, a, well, I think it was characterized as a, you know, an elderly or something like that, senior rate, kind of thing. And, and so that's what I think you're, you know, we've tried to do here with the tier one versus tier two. We can't really, you know, do like a senior rate or something for, you know, a specific group of people. But for a low use, like you saw with the nine CCF threshold, so for anyone, uh, you know, senior or otherwise, kind of thing, you might have a younger, rim professional living by themselves or something, too, that, that we basically have addressed that, and that they're going to see some rate relief, if you will, as Habib noted, so.
Yeah, so to that point, when you said, you know, eight, just to the one page, eight percent, eight percent, eight percent, that's each time, but that's not actually accurate per rate.
So that's, that's the revenue increases.
Right, that's a total revenue.
That's not actually what, what you'll see on the bill. Yes, correct.
So the vast majority, seven thousand two hundred and seven, are going to pay far less than that, right? I mean, that's.
Well, far less than eight percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, as he noted, the average, you're going to be about five point three percent, I think he said. So, and that's just because there's interest income. There's, you know, some other revenue from hydrant use and things like that that also help, you know, offset that, so.
So, Mike, um, so I was just trying to figure out for just reference for people listening, what CCF? It's seven hundred and four, seven hundred and fifty gallons per?
Yeah, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. There's, it's a hundred cubic feet, and there's seven point four eight gallons per cubic feet.
So a house using a three quarter, with a three-quarter meter, which is most of ours using the twenty CCF, which is the example you gave on the slide, is roughly like fifteen thousand gallons a month?
That's about right, yes.
Just trying to think of perspective. Yeah, okay. Okay, um, any public comment on this?
So as I think the only person in this room, other than maybe Tina, who wouldn't have been in this room at the time, the only person in this, that, in this room right now that was here during this original water stuff that happened eight years ago, or whatever, whenever the last time we did this, I can tell you, give you a little history lesson. It was quite the entertaining council meetings. You think you've been through some fun ones, you should have been through those. And they, and it was one council member that held out, that great, gave us the plan that we have, which was not what the consultants recommended. It is not what the overall council wanted. But that one council member changed his vote at the last minute because he didn't want water meters, period, even though we had to have them. So we are not doing a plan that anyone recommended. And what it did, and who it hurt the worst, is the businesses. So I'm going to step into that role, not on behalf of the chamber, because I haven't discussed it with them, but as a business owner now. I'm going to step in, and I'm going to be the Lorax, and instead of speaking for the trees, I'm going to speak for the businesses. Where this hurts, when you're asking for the bulk of that money to come from the connections, it hurts your businesses. Because when the, when government agencies don't watch the left-hand and right-hand thing, they make decisions that affect other decisions they've made. And some of those decisions, where there's a city ordinance that went into place, that businesses had to have a separate connection for their landscaping. So now all of a sudden, you've doubled that connection fee, which is your higher fee for those businesses. So the businesses hurt over this, because we made a city ordinance. Yes, we want beautiful landscaping. I don't go far back enough when that was put into place as to why they were necessitating a separate meter. It would be nice if we can somehow, because then what happened? We went into a drought, and the businesses were told, you can't water. But you have to pay for that connection. So, you know, please be mindful that the decisions today could affect a lot of other decisions from the past and your decisions coming into the future, because we are hurting. Our landscaping has been off for, our watering has been off for about, I don't know, four years, ever since we had to basically turn it off. And yet we pay the whatever, because you have to have the one inch. We have to pay, you know, we're paying the thirty-five dollars a month, or whatever it is. On top of that, those businesses that have required sprinkler systems, you have to have that higher connection, because yes, that's an insurance thing. You're not using that connection. Hopefully, no one ever has to use that, but you're paying, yet. So at my business alone, we have five connections. Three of them, the city required us to have that we don't use. So please be mindful of some of these decisions that are being made. And know that this plan that the city's been working under, or the tier system, not the tiers. I like the tier system, that's improving what we've got. That's a good thing. But it is not what was recommended by the, by the consultants. It was not what was recommended by city staff at the time. It was a flip-floppy council member who didn't want to have a water meter at his home. So that, that's the history lesson. It was very entertaining. We even had political cartoons made out of it, because we'd never seen anything like this happen before. So, uh, here in Galt, it was very interesting. But please be mindful of, of these decisions and of the businesses who are paying all of these extra connection fees that they're not even using, because they can't, because we're in a drought. So, just.
Thank you for the educational lesson there. I remember there's something about it, I just couldn't remember what it was.
So to her point, if, if there was a small correction made at the tier one level, could that address some of the issues that they have? Like, you know, because you're talking about, like, fire suppression system that hopefully never runs, but you're paying that repeatedly, and they're paying hundreds of dollars for, you know, meters and systems they never use.
Yeah, so the fire connections isn't part of that total, and you're just paying for the fire system man based on all the meters. We don't, the city doesn't have, we're not setting up separate dedicated fire line charges. That's not one of the components in this study.
No, that's, that's not what I understood her to say, is if she has a meter, she's paying for it regardless of water flows.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't, if, if it's a, the dedicated meter for potable service, for the main service, or for outdoor, she is paying for that meter. But if it's a fire line, we are not setting separate fire line charges in this study. The connection fees are, are separate, completely separate from the, the base rates. Connection fees are when you first develop and you need to connect to the system, then it, those customers are paying a buy-in component to be on par with their existing customers for all the improvements that have been built before that connection comes online, just like impact fees for library, police, fire. There's also capacity fees for water and wastewater. That's separate and not part of this study, but that is something we'll be doing later on.
The way you're explaining it, though, I'm understanding it's like there's a connection fee for the meter to go in. But the way I hear it from Ms. Rodriguez is that there's still a residual cost every month, even if that meter is not used. Am I misunderstanding what was said?
So the only residual, the only cost that I could determine based on my experience would be if they have a separate dedicated fire line. And if there's water use that goes through that, then they should be charged for that water. But if it's just for the dedicated fire line, like a standby charge, we're not creating standby charges for fire lines in, for, for the City of Galt. So there is no residual charge for fire lines.
Mike, could you elaborate on Bonnie's comments? What, if there's any, do they have to have separate meters for?
Yeah, well, the, the connection fee is a one-time, like Habib just said. You know, once you enter the system, you know, for basically putting that connection in, that's that one-time connection fee. But, and we can work with Ms. Rodriguez offline and look at her accounts and see, you know, what she's being charged for, to see if there's anything that's erroneous or whatnot. Before a dedicated fire line that there's nothing flowing through, that's not, that's not in our, in our number of accounts in our analysis here. So, um, we would have to look and see what, what she's referring to, to make sure that we're talking apples and apples, kind of thing, so.
So, so you're unaware of whether, if we have some businesses in town that have multiple meters? And if so, why would that be?
I, I am aware of a couple of businesses that have multiple meters, as she said, for irrigation. There are a couple that way. And, um, so that we know of, you know, like the school districts, they have separate meters because they have a large irrigation, you know, for their fields and whatnot. So I am aware that there are some that do have multiple meters. But, uh, again, we would have to probably look at, you know, a case-by-case if there's something going on there. I don't know details on that.
Mr. Selling, I, I believe the Bonnie Rodriguez is talking about the three-inch, four-inch, when have a connection fees. And you know, the impact fees is too high. There might be a separate issue we need to discuss, but that's why I believe she's talking about the, when you have a new building, and City of Galt have an impact fees, it's too much difference with two-inch, three-inch, and four-inch. And that might be a separate issue we need to discuss. The other thing, uh, just there is some business in this town, they have a two meters, uh, one going to the business, and the other going to the landscaping.
Correct.
And some business, they have, the city never tell before they, they're going through the, uh, one meter. And I, I'm telling you, in my situation, around a year ago, I, I think year, I think year, year and a half ago, when I get the second connection. Because of Mr. Bell Forrest, he came to, was talking to, there is too much bell, because I have only one meter, and they charging the same thing with the landscaping. And the only way, you know, we have the difference, I have to get another connection. Another connection with landscaping. But there's, there is some business, they have a two meters.
Yeah, usually, usually the advantage to having a separate meter on the landscaping is to note that that is only for landscaping, and it's not flowing into, you know, the sewer system.
So your bell is.
So there's, so, because otherwise, if you only have one meter and everything is going through it, you're getting basically charged, you know, for the, the sewer, for all of it. And if you have a separate meter for the landscaping, now you're not getting charged the sewer for what flows through that meter, so.
So the, so the, so the public would understand it's in, like, if a, a meter to the business, you assume the water that goes in also goes out, whether it goes down the drain in your sink, or you use the toilet, or the shower, or whatever. But on landscaping, that water, the water going out doesn't necessarily go back in the sewer, because it's absorbed by the landscape. Got it?
That's correct. And we use a, when we allocate the cost to commercial customers for the sewer side, we apply a return factor for what is expected to be flow versus water. So when we allocate costs, we're not using the full water usage of commercial as how much we're going to use, as their percent of what gets allocated to them. We actually use a return factor of like ninety, eighty-five percent to reflect that not all the water they use ends up being flowed to the treatment plant. So then we make sure that we account for that, so that we don't overcharge them. But we are aware, there are definitely customers in your area that have multiple meters. We're not denying that. And they do get charged for both meters. But they're not being charged for a dedicated fire line, and connection fees are separate. Also, multifamily properties, they have, very common to have multiple meters because of the way their buildings are structured. They can't serve all by one meter. So there's definitely customers in your jurisdiction that have multiple meters, and they do get charged, a fixed charge for each meter.
So if, if a customer decides to have their landscaping meter removed, they will save the charges. But if they choose to landscape irrigate through their standard meter, it's going to cost them a lot more. But it, it is an option, so.
Correct.
What's the cost of having it removed?
You would have to get a contractor. I wouldn't want to speculate. It would just, you know, be on a case-by-case basis, so.
Okay.
But someone who felt like their, the cost is heavy on them because of that reason, and things they're not using, that would be something they should look into, I guess.
Yeah, and I think we could also, you know, calculate if they did remove it based on what the flow is through that landscape meter, if they wanted to remove it, and just have it all go through, you know, the, the, the main service. We could, you know, do a rough calculation as to, okay, what are they paying now for that meter, that separate meter, versus what would they pay, you know, additional sewer charges if everything flowed through there? So, again, with the return factor, that would be noted too, so. Because we know not every drop that goes through the water meter ends up in the treatment plant, so.
Interesting. So, I mean, what are you looking at from us tonight? Looking for a direction on, I mean?
Yeah, I think as far as next steps, and, and I'll let Habib jump in here too. But he's going to do a final report, and we'll, we'll include the, the reference on the sewer lateral. I think the direction that we generally received from council before was to build it into the rates rather than, you know, put it on the property owner as, as it may occur. So that's one piece there. And then I think as far as setting up for a Prop two eighteen hearing, probably later this summer. And again, with the, you know, if, if that, you know, is approved, then the rates would take effect in January, so.
So for those of you listening, the two eighteen, basically, the city's not able to raise fees such as these without a public hearing, an opportunity for people to protest a certain amount of. So that's what the Prop two eighteen process is that Mr. Selling you just referred to, for those of you who are watching. So, um, so for tonight, um, I mean, looking for, just, not a motion, we're just looking for direction. What are we looking for here?
Provide any direction, um, to get, receive the report and provide any direction. There's no action to be taken, right, Mike?
Correct, there's no action.
So, so Mike, my, my other question is, you said if we go with that process, and that's rate increase going to go in January, right? And there is a possibility we can maybe postpone a six-month, because we just get out of COVID?
Uh, that's possible. I think as, as Habib noted, and we've, I think noted in the staff report, if we do, it may cause a need to recalculate, you know, what the rates might be just to maintain adequate reserves, you know, per state requirements and, and those types of things, so that we don't, you know, essentially start to draw on our reserves too much.
So, uh, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, is a direction, like, thank you for the presentation, move forward with what you're doing? I mean, I'm just want to be sure that what we're doing here with, I, I, I like what he said earlier with the way we're doing, you know, breaking it into the two tiers is going to be more cost-effective for seniors, because that's what I hear a lot of. And if that's going to be a benefit to some of our citizens because of that reason, which I think it will, then I, I think that's a great idea, and I appreciate you guys considering that.
I, I would agree with that. I would only add that, you know, if we could address some of the businesses' concerns about, you know, getting charged for multiple meters that they're not using, or at least give them the option to, you know, it might be expensive, but they could get rid of it, or provide them options that would be minimum adequate.
Yeah, and not having been here, then, yeah, we can definitely look into it and, and speak with Ms. Rodriguez offline about her specific situation, but to see if there's, there's anything else, you know, along those lines that we can address, so. But generally, yeah, we were looking for, you know, we agree we're on the right track, kind of thing. Or no, we think, you know, you want to go a different direction, or you want to delay, or.
What I'd love to do is just not have the rates be that high, but it doesn't seem like that's really an option because of the loans that we had to take out. And I'm sure, as I was saying to Jay, I'm sure they'll make us pick out another loan and do something before those are paid off. So, the SRF want to go away, and then we'll have a new one come on, probably from the state of California. Love our state. Uh, yeah, I mean, if we can't really, I don't think we could run the rights of the past in respects to what Ms. Rodriguez was mentioning, but I think if we could look at those and see if there's anything that could be done, that would be great. So is that what you need from us? We, we okay? I think we're, thank you.
And then I'm, based on today's meeting and the feedback, I'm going to start drafting a report that then gives you all. I'm going to start drafting a report that then gives you all the backup details and calculations that make up these rates. And then that report has to be on file with the city before customers receive the Prop 218 notices. So I would expect that that would be, the report would be completed by next month. And then anytime after that, you could move forward sending out the notices.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. We didn't have any public comment on that, right, other than any?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to our next item, communication, do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Our next category, city clerk's report, we have a couple items here. Subject is number one, the 2022 general municipal election, Tina?
Okay, so the, it, the direction is adopt a resolution calling a general municipal election and requesting the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento County to consolidate the general municipal election with the statewide election held on November eighth, 2022 pursuant to section 10403 of the Elections Code. The resolution institutes a filing fee of $25 for the filing of nomination papers as set forth by the Galt Municipal Code. And the resolution also sets forth the word count limit for an optional candidate statement to 200 words. The Registrar of Voters has requested the city include in the resolution the method by which the winner of a tie will be determined and who is responsible for determining the winner. In the past, city council has elected to hold a runoff election in the event of a tie, which would be at a cost to the city. At this time, the exact dollar amount is unknown. However, at a minimum, the cost would be an additional $22,000, the approximate cost of the general election. City Council has a discretion to select an alternative process, which would be the draw straws, pull name from a hat, or any other general tie breaking method. In summary, we would need a motion to adopt the resolution consolidating the general municipal election with the statewide election on November eighth, 2022, setting the candidate statement to 200 words and holding a runoff election in the event of a tie unless city council chooses an alternate method.
So this, nothing is, this is different, the way I read the report, nothing is, this is really different than what we did last year?
No, we just have to send this resolution to the Registrar of Voters.
Do we have to choose the runoff method now or?
If it's different, yes.
Okay, what do you think, guys, think about ranked choice voting? That would require just, basically if three of us voted for one person as, how do you put it?
Now, the runoff, this only, the tie is like literally when somebody has exactly the same amount of votes. Like exactly. Right, I don't even know if that's ever happened, so, I mean, ever. I don't think it has.
Keeping the same baby was doing.
Yeah, I'd hate, I'd hate, I'd hate to decide somebody getting an office just by random, like says their paper rock or drawing a straw, that's really, I mean, another runoff costs money, but I mean, in democracy, a runoff is, that's people's votes count. And it's it's like very, 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 it's not going to happen. I say that and then.
Yeah, knocking on wood, but if it's.
Dual.
If it's ranked choice voting, it's been a while since I didn't even think about it until you started talking, you know, going through all the rules. But it, do it, that means our ballot has to be different, where we have to have like first, second, third choice? That would be the only difference. And then if my first.
Oh, I see.
If three of us, our second choice was one individual, they would clearly have more votes by the public. That's why I like it, because it's predetermined by the public and you don't have to have another election, you already did.
So don't think that would allow you to consolidate with this ballot because it's, none of the other.
None of the other races have been put in.
Have ranks, they just have, you know, pick one, pick two.
So like we have primaries right now, so for us to do this, like, we can't because those ballots are already out and they're not set up that way, right?
It would only be for local stuff, right? It's just for us.
No, we're consolidating with the general election in November.
The county supervisor and all the other.
We're on the same scantron with everybody else and it.
So they have to get in line with us, which is not going to happen. Is that what you're saying?
It's too late for them to get in line with us.
Okay, so, as is.
Yeah, public comment on this item?
No public comment.
All right. All right, looking for a motion to adopt a resolution calling for the general municipal election and requesting the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento County to consolidate the general municipal election with statewide election held on November eighth, 2022 pursuant to section 10403 of the Elections Code.
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Resolution approved force zero, moving on to item two, which is going to be a council direction regarding the continuation of AB 361, Tina?
I am referring that to Mr. Splendorio.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, for the last item tonight. Hopefully it'll be pretty straightforward. As you know, the council's been making AB 361 resolutions since October. AB 361 is a quick refresher, allows the council members in particular to attend city council meetings remotely in the event for for various reasons. That obviously was helpful in February when the county health officer ordered Brown Act meetings to basically not be live in person. As the governor's repealed a lot of the executive emergency orders, the question is the council, if they want to continue to make the findings, we still can make the findings, but, or we just want to let the resolution lapse. We made, and just so you know, we made the newest, latest resolution was actually passed tonight on the consent calendar. So it would apply to the, for the next 30 days. If the council elects not to renew it, it just laps. No, no further actions needed, so staff's just looking for a direction. Again, the the decision is, do we want to allow the council to have the flexibility to attend remotely or not? If the intent is, we're going to be here in person anyways, there's, there isn't a reason to renew it. And council staff still has the ability to, as a courtesy to the public, but not as a strict requirement of AB 361, still can have the audio option for calling in if if they're, if they want, so.
The side effect of this is it kicks in the required payment within one quarter, the TOT tax?
No.
No?
This has, this is, just relates to the tell, the council's ability to attend meetings virtually if a council member wanted to. It's a whole separate issue than any of the other emergency stuff.
Okay.
So what the side effect of this is, let's say in a month or two, a council member wanted to attend a meeting remotely, they could still do that, but they're going to have to do that in a way that's a little more onerous. You're going to have to post wherever you are, if you're on vacation in Hawaii, you're going to have to post your hotel room or whatever, wherever you're going to be calling in from to attend the meeting, like it was back in 2019, essentially before the pandemic. So you'll still be able to attend remotely. What AB 361 is, it made attendance remotely a lot easier for council members due to the pandemic. So that's the only effect of this. And like I said, if council wants, staff is still avail, able to at least let folks call in on the audio line so that that courtesy wouldn't be lost.
So my understanding is that, I mean, it has nothing to do with the state of emergency, so this is really all about councilman, the convenience of a council member being able to attend via Zoom, remotely, via Zoom, the new way without having to do, like you said, and and via Zoom, right? Or no, or this has nothing to do with that?
This has, you can use different technologies, it's just a question of would they be able to attend remotely or not?
But you could attend remotely before, you just had to post it on where your door and all that kind. So really, that's the only change is that.
Exactly.
Okay. But the big thing, that that to me is like, that's just little things. But I think the big thing here is we need to decide as the council is, do we want to keep, do we want to continue to allow the public to be able to make public comment through the telephone, not have to be here in the, and, you know, that's, that's been the big thing that's been different in the last two years. So is that important to us to continue that? Do we want to forego and go back to the way, what do we want to do? That's what we need to decide.
You know, the public comment, I mean, that we should have give the every opportunity to the public. If council have the opportunity, staff have the opportunity, then public should be have the opportunity.
Is there a, I know there's a little bit of a work for Tina, is there, really, is there a cost behind that?
No, it's just monitoring.
Yeah.
And it's audio only right now.
Or?
Pardon me?
This can be like a hybrid or just?
Right, they can attend via Zoom or on the phone, but with our capabilities, it is audio only. So it's somewhat of a hybrid.
Is there other forces that could cancel this even if we agree to continue it? Like?
Yeah, as soon, I got to put this tactfully. If the governor decides to to withdraw the state of emergency, then that would, that would be one of the conditions precedent. And so if that goes away, we wouldn't have the ability to continue under AB 361.
I feel I don't think there's any reason to 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 remove it. We have it in place, it doesn't seem like it's that cumbersome on us to have to put on the consent. I like the fact that the count, that people can follow, call in, I think it encourages, although I don't know what big result it's had so far, we didn't have any phone comments tonight. But I think it's just another avenue for people to to be engaged in civic, you know, meetings and things. So until I think the powers that be cancel it for us, I would be in favor of just keeping it in place.
I agree.
I misunderstood, if we let it lapse, we can still put in a, into place to allow public comment remotely, right?
Yeah, it's still a courtesy that we can provide.
We can still do that without extending this. And if the county health officer goes back to it, we have to redo it anyway.
Yeah, Councilmember Papinow is absolutely right. What's on the table is not, as a, as a side effect, if you let it lapse, you can, you also have to decide, do you want to provide that courtesy to the public? But the issue is, as a council, if we're, if you, if you all are intending to be in person and you're okay with potentially having to deal with posting if you ever want to attend remotely, then you may say, hey, let's keep this AB 361 resolution in place. But if you're not concerned about that, you can let that lapse and direct staff to keep the audio courtesy. And so to the public, they would have the same access now.
So the city clerk actually clarified it quite simply, it's for us only, so.
Yeah, I I'm fine to let it lapse. I've attended meetings, Brown Act meetings remotely and, you know, I put a little piece of paper on the door that said, I'm having a meeting.
Right, yeah, I I'm fine with letting it lapse too.
And we do have public comment.
Okay, let's hear the public comment.
Phyllis? Oh, you're done, finished? Okay, thank you.
All right. Then, yeah, I mean, if it just comes down to that, and again, we're not really taking anything away, I guess, because, but I, I, so I would support taking, letting it lapse. But at that time, I would like to have a discussion about keeping the the ability for people to remotely comment by phone, I would like to keep that in place. I think it's an extra thing for the public, so as long as it's contingent with that.
Agreed.
Okay.
And no motions needed, that's fine consensus.
All right, then we'll move on. Item O, comments by staff, Mr. Heinz?
Mr. Mayor, due to the lateness of the hour, there is no comments by staff.
Okay, we'll move on to our last item, comments by city council members, future agenda items. Start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple thing to say. First of all, thank you for the staff and working hard to give all the report. I also like to thank you, this public comment, especially Kevin Boris, Bonnie Rodriguez, they're from the chamber, Michael Little, it's his comment with the President of the Association. Kathy Grimes, Dog Park, thank you for her to comment. Mr. Brosman, Philip Johnson, thank you for coming to the chamber.
Thank you for allowing.
Harry Vingeau, regarding his LLD. And I'd also like to thank you, Planning Commissioner Dan Denier, he's sitting back there. Thank you for coming to the meeting. And I also attend a couple events. I attended Galt High School Board Meeting. Tracy Cross, Galt Sunrise Rotary Club member, received the 2022 Honesty Award from the Galt Community of Character Coalition. She well deserved. I also attend Taco Di Mayo Event last Saturday at Lerton Center. It was organized by Galt Sunrise Rotary Club. Everyone have a great time and food were awesome. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Papinow?
Thanks as always to the staff. And once again, thanks to the, the staff and the cooperation with the chamber. It's much appreciated to see that move smoothly. And I complimented Captain Small and the Chief earlier on their press conference today and the cooperation with the District Attorney's Office in bringing a closure to a 1988 very tragic murder. So hats off to them, good work. And my understanding is there are no more outstanding cold cases in Galt, so that's cool, that's all.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you to the staff for putting up with us. It was a long day for many people, so I appreciate answering all the questions and the back and forth. Sometimes it can be arduous, but it's, it's good for us and it's certainly good for the public as well. I appreciate it. The only other thing, Mary Magnus spoke last council meeting about the housing. And I am under the understand, I am under the understanding that there is a timeline related to that housing project. And I'm wondering if my fellow council members would support me in in seeing that staff works to make sure that they can meet the timeline if I am, my understanding is correct.
Well, as I mentioned in my communications with the council, I believe yesterday, the issue of senior housing and senior services here in Galt deserves a little bit more of a conversation. It is a broader topic. And while I appreciate what Mary is doing and trying to solve that particular issue, we've got to take on this entire issue because she mentioned a certain percentage of seniors in Galt. Well, 24% of our folks are over 55. And so we're going to have to deal with some issues related to graying and senior services. And I think there needs to be a broader conversation. Regarding the project by the church, they are, they are looking at, bless you, obtaining city owned land. And we need to first run an analysis of the highest and best use of that land before we consider parting with it. We also want to make sure that they're looking at other options as well. So we'll continue to work with them, but I'm letting you know there are some headwinds there that we're trying to educate them on. But I will be bringing back this larger and broader conversation about senior services sometime during August because this is, this is an issue that deserves greater conversation and consideration amongst the council.
What is the deadline, do you recall?
I don't recall there was a deadline.
What I, what I remember is that the first time they were looking at property, this wasn't progressing quickly enough and they lost the opportunity to get that property. It's my impression that there is a debt, there is, they are up against a time crunch. What I'm confused on by your comments, Mr. Heinz, is that, is that I understand it, but it's like, oh, we can't look at this project right now because we need to have a bigger discussion and let's wait a couple months to have that. This is a project that makes sense. If I'm not mistaken, the entire council was very supportive of it and gave you direction to pursue forward with, talking to them and report back to us. That was the direction that we gave you the last time this just came up. I would expect that policy, that, Ms. Ms. Johnson, please, thank you. I would expect that 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 direction be honored until that, maybe that project just falls apart, it doesn't work. We have, we have a lot of land that you may not, maybe you don't know, but has been vacant for many, many, many years.
Yes, I'm familiar with our land, but I'm also familiar with our.
Excuse me, sir, let me finish, please, and then I'll let you speak.
Feel free.
Yes. So we have land that we want to do something with, we've been trying to do infill projects. We've been trying to find, you know, make measures for infill development, you know, incentives to, for people to do that. And then we have somebody coming forward with a project that makes, checks a lot of boxes. It checks a lot of boxes for veterans, for seniors, it checks a lot of boxes for for land. Now, I know they're trying to acquire city land, but, you know, at, I mean, is the city going to sit on those forever? I mean, one of those lots has been empty for, I don't know, 25 years. I mean, we're developing stuff or we're not developing it. But what I don't want to do is have somebody come along with a great. do is have somebody come along with a great idea that the council seems to support. And then we just kind of meander around, well, you know, we need to talk about it a little more and there's a bigger picture. I mean, I'm aware of how many people are seniors. We're either, we're either doing something or we're not, because, you know, that's my feeling of it. I, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little frustrated with this, honestly.
I, I must have missed something because I thought she said that they were starting to work with this development company? And that was my comment was, great, I'm waiting for you guys to bring us this plan to look at.
They have. They presented the plan.
No, it was an idea.
No, it's.
I haven't seen a, a, a true development plan that they can present to.
No plan has been turned into community development for review.
That, that's what I was looking for, was a plan turned in to, uh, to Director Hoffman and.
It has been. There's been, I've seen the blue, I've seen the, the renderings myself, I've seen the whole.
Can we, instead of going back and forth about the ifs and buts, can we just, can we just, no, can we just do this instead? Can you, on the next meeting, bring us a summation of where we stand?
Sure.
With, maybe the other folks can come in and we can all get on the same page at one time.
Great.
Sound great?
That sounds great.
You guys agree with that?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just, when I get, when the council gives direction on something, I just wish it would be followed.
Well, you need to be sure that you gave that direction. I'll go back and check the tape and I'll send you a transcript.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I do remember, and it hasn't, there hasn't been a plan brought forward in a public meeting, an actual plan. It's a great idea and I was waiting to see it fleshed out and.
Well, Mr. Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Mendez both have it and so does the city manager. And I've seen it, I've had discussion with Mr. Hoffman about it and there's been some dialogue and some, some feedback that I think needs to be given back, but the ball is back in the city's court. They've, they've, the, the city asked for a rendering, Mr. Mr. Heinz asked for them to present something regarding the Brewster Lot. They have presented that and now the ball's back in the city's court for them to, for the city to provide feedback on if they like that or they don't, or where we go from there. And all I want is the ball to be moved forward on this project and not, we'll come visit it back in August, in two months from now.
We will, we will move the ball forward, sir, and we will take a look and per Councilmember Vandenberg's request, I will bring you back a summation of where we sit. Whether or not that plan was submitted just for, hey, what do you think, versus that plan was submit for, we need your approval in review.
But there was a plan submitted.
It would, it would go to Planning Commission next, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that'd be the next step, so.
I'm only stating that people, you just said there wasn't a plan submitted, but there was.
I just told you, I'm going to give you a summation of where we are next time we meet.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I have an item, but actually I think I'll, I'll, uh, work with, um, uh, I want to ask Frank about, there's a, there's a municipal code regarding something that I have an idea with something and I don't know if it's in place with, in California or whatever, but I'll find more research on that and then I'll, then I'll maybe bring it up the next meeting to see what the council thinks to, for a future agenda. I'm, it's nothing super important, but I'll just forego that for now, uh, tonight.